In progress.
Good evening, everyone. This is the Board of Selecting meeting. Today is Thursday, the 13th, one day before Valentine's Day. And let's read this. After the, well, not, I don't have to read that. This meeting is being recorded and broadcast via our local cable access channel, WCAT, Zoom, Facebook, and YouTube. If anyone in the audience is recording, please let us know. And if you would like to speak, we will give you your time. You can come up to the podium, identify yourself. And then to get started, we're going to ask you to stand up for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. It's very warm in here. It is. Well, we just got to 40 degrees, 40 degrees today, yeah?
Just about.
Thank you for the agenda.
Mr. Chairman, if we could have a moment of silence for our principal at the Quaybog Middle School that just passed away.
Casey.
Casey. Him and his family and his, and the staff.
It's going to be on Sunday. Please, we're going to have a minute of silence for the former principal of Quaybog School, Casey. Thank you, thank you very much. I didn't know you guys knew him, but he was such a wonderful person. So bad. Really brought to our knees, to everyone at school. Thank you for the reminder. We're going to, discussion with the water, water department, Warren Water Department about water line replacement and hydrant costs.
And I think we also need to, Cynthia Baxter, Warren Water District, just a member. And I think we also need to give you our assessment increase. We unfortunately wanted to get this to you last week, but due to an injury for one commissioner and illness for another commissioner, we weren't able to meet until yesterday to look at these costs and see where we were. So would you like to start with a question that I can answer, or do you just want me to go ahead?
Why don't we just go ahead and then?
Okay. Just a little background, it's part of our assessment, our asset management program to replace two water hydrants in the town every year. And we have 127 hydrants for the town and we have 12 private hydrants. And in 2024, we did not increase the hydrant assessment fee because we failed to meet the parameters of that program. We didn't get to installed, but we have made up for that and we are now current as to where we should be. In fiscal year 2025, the assessment fee was increased by 6%. Having not increased it the year before. And that went up to $336 per town hydrant and also that same assessment fee goes to the private hydrants. Unfortunately, the cost of the hydrants have gone up substantially since we've had to purchase any. Through foresight, we were able to purchase two additional hydrants above and beyond what we needed to meet our obligation to this program. So we really didn't have to purchase any last year and we got them at a very good price. So, but unfortunately, what we're hearing from our vendor now, who is FW Web Company, all of their documents say, due to current market conditions, all units are subject to, all unit prices are subject to change up to the date of the delivery. So the amount that they're charging per hydrant is fluid, which puts us kind of in a, in a sketchy spot. So we sat and we considered the best that we could do for the town. And our community is increase of 8% instead of 6%, which is still giving 4% that never went up in a previous year. So the assessment would now be an increase of $26.88 per hydrant. If we went up by 20%, if we had gone up by 6%, it would have been like $20 a hydrant. So we're only going up a little bit more. So the total cost per hydrant now is going to be $362.88. It costs us, and we have a substantial amount of hydrants that are old. So we're, through our asset management program, we're identifying those that are the oldest that need to repair or replacement and we're, we're functioning on replacing those that are the oldest, so they'll serve the town the best. And we're maintaining and repairing others as they come along. Our target is two a year, sometimes it turns out to be three a year. If someone backs into one and doesn't own up to it, we, we pay to replace that. If they break, we do those as well. We do our best to maintain them and keep them in working order. Presently, at the cost per hydrant, the labor, the materials, the tar, and the hydrant itself, it costs us $7,484 to replace one hydrant. So that's how we came to that assessment. I know that there was a question about, and I asked Karen before I came to find out what, what the question was with the water replacement, water line replacement. So I asked someone in our department that is kind of involved with the community block grants that you guys get. And what I was told is that in most cases, to get these, for these grants, it's required that the infrastructure under the surface of the ground be maintained or replaced before resurfacing the road. So we greatly appreciate the fact that when you get these grants, you're able to help with the water lines. We did replace on Richardson Street, we replaced, I think it was 350 feet of piping, the only section of Richardson Street that didn't have piping, new piping. We put that in during the last project that you had. So that's my, my answer to the question as to why we're going up on our, our assessment fee, even though the town is using its block grant money to replace water lines. So I hope I've answered that question. I'll do any more that I can for you, if you have any, anything else to ask me.
You guys have any questions?
No, yeah.
No? Okay.
Can I, can I just, I would like just a statement from the fire department, because you, you guys use this guy, this hydrant, right? It's so important for you. I just want to.
I mean, we, both, both water departments are private entities. I mean, we don't have, you know, any say over that. You know, the town, they are private entities, you know, we've worked well with the superintendents, you know, they are, you know, get out there and replace what they can, you know, I don't know, I have no idea, you know, you know, the exact age of the system, you know, we, we try very hard to only use it when we need to, you know, because we know that like the Warren system, it will mess up the water if we, you know, if we're using it, you know, for just filling trucks and stuff. So the only times we really use that is when it's an actual emergency during a, a structural fire or something like that. The Westmoren system's a little bit newer, it's not quite as antiquated, so it doesn't get, you know, turned up as much as the other ones. So, you know, in terms of replacement, I really can't speak to exactly what the regulations are there, because I don't know. I mean, you know, they've been responsive when we asked them to, you know, to, for the most part, to, to, you know, if there was a damaged one or, or something like that. But again, we don't have any say over the hydrant system. It's a private entity.
Thank you, Chief. I, I just wanted to have your statement, because the only thing I know about hydrants is I can't park in front of them.
If I might say, the reason why when you turn on the hydrant, there's all that mess in there, is it's all the mess that was in the system prior to our water treatment plant. So it's going to take, according to Ty and Bond, several years of aggressive flushing to get all of that residue that's in there out. So the hopes are that in the future, that won't be an issue when they, when they use the hydrants. So that's kind of something that happened over the years of pulling this stuff up out of the soil, the more water that the town pulled up out of the wells, the more of this material went in. Now that we're going through that green sand filter, there's no more of it being put into the system. So with, hopefully with aggressive flushing, according to Ty and Bond, in, hopefully five years, there won't be any issue with any residue of being left in the lines to cause that kind of a, that kind of a mess, so.
Thank you. David, I'm going to give time to you.
All right. I have a, I have a real concern with this.
Okay.
With the prices going up, because it seems like the town has been helping the water department. By digging up the roads, when we replace our infrastructure, we replace the water lines throughout that road also. That's through our grants and money we're using from our grant to replace that for private entity. Okay? We do it to help the residents, all right, because the residents deserve better. My concern is, is it seems like the water department is going up significantly for, even though the town has been saving you guys money, all right, by replacing this infrastructure. Because if you would have purchased it and replaced it and dig up the roads, replace all the lines, as you should, it's going to cost you hundreds of thousands of dollars per road. We're doing that when we're doing it. So it's not costing you anything, we're replacing all that infrastructure. So it's saving that water department, all right? And then we're getting nickel and dimed on fire hydrants, all right? You didn't went up, you didn't go up the previous year, but you kind of doubled what you were going to go up to make up the difference.
No, that's, it didn't work out that way. It may appear to be that way, but that was not why it went up that price.
So you say you would go up 4%, but you end up going 8% this year?
No, 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 it was going to be 6%. We didn't go up 6% in the 2024 year.
Okay.
So we made no increase whatsoever, okay? Because we didn't meet that, that program. And that was a decision that we made that we didn't have to make. And we did it out of good faith. And that's why we didn't increase it, because we didn't, we didn't meet that program. There's nothing in our asset management that, that that's a regulation, but it's what we did to be fair to the community. I must tell you also that the water district is a private entity, because that's what the legislature determined. And it's truly not a private entity, because it is paid by the Warren Water District people who are citizens in the town. So it's really not, it's really not like that money is coming out of a corporation. That's actually coming out of the residents that use that water.
So is it, is it a municipal department?
It is a municipal department.
You don't belong to the town.
We don't, we are an independent municipality. That's the law, that's how it was set up with the legislature. We had nothing to do with it.
You're completely separate from the town.
Completely separate from the town, because that's what the legislator, legislature did. And the only way that can be changed is to go to the legislature to make that change. So we've, we've done pretty well with the people in our community. We didn't raise our water rates last year. So we try our best to do the best that we can for our community, but to, just to give an understanding of the fact that it's an independent entity, it is a municipality and it is, the payments from that come from the people that use the water. The hydrants go to help whomever needs the water. If, if they end up filling a tanker truck and they take it to the outskirts where there's no water being paid for out there, we don't say you can't fill up the tanker truck and take it outside of bounds. Why would we do that? This is our community. So just so you understand, that it's not like, it's not like some big corporation that's making money. We're simply making enough money to meet the requirements to operate our plant, to pay our personnel. And if there's any left, we put it towards capital gains, I mean, capital planning. So if there's a crisis, we can face that, we put it towards buying more pipe. If, if we can, we replace the pipe as it's needed. We wouldn't really open up the road to replace pipe if it wasn't needed to be done. So we do have a pretty good asset management plan going on now. So I know I got this email from Chris Duffy about working next on Hillside Terrace, a comprehensive construction project including water lines. But there's also a list of many other streets for an ongoing project, project that they'll be going to in the future. And because of the asset management program that we now have, we can give all that information as to the age of the pipes and all of those kind of things that prior circumstances wouldn't allow us to do that. We've done our best to try to improve the quality of our data that we have, to manage our assets much better, meaning the materials that we have. So we've done the best that we can to try to upgrade and improve from the previous commissioner system that we had. We still have three commissioners. Our meetings generally go three to four and a half hours twice a month now, rather than 45 minutes every two weeks. So we have definitely spent a lot of time in trying to make it better for the community and do those things that we can. I appreciate the fact that you use some of this grant money. If you don't have to replace the water lines and you're doing it out of goodness of your hearts for, you know, the community members, I can't thank you enough. If there's pipe that needs to be replaced, we do our best to manage that. Once again, we're considering, we've been wanting to work on Hillside Terrace to make that a loop in the system, instead of having a dead end. We have to go to this group of people that own the water department, okay? The people that pay the bills own the water department. We have to go before that group of people at an annual meeting and say, we want to raise the water rates to this amount in order to come up with X amount of dollars to replace X amount of pipe length. That 350 feet, you'd be surprised at how much that costs. And obviously you know, because you're replacing pipes as you go. So we have to go before them, and if they choose not to approve that, then it doesn't get done. So if you have five people there and four of them don't want it, it doesn't happen. So we appreciate the fact that you're doing the, the right thing by including that in your grants. If you don't have to do that, then it's entirely up to you guys. We do have, the only revenue that we have to keep our plant running, our staff running, and making improvements is to have the water bills from people and the rental of the hydrants. That's our revenue. There's, there's, and a little bit of interest that we might get, and you know, interest now is not very good. You have two commissioners, three commissioners that are making a total of $200 a month and putting in probably 20 hours a month at least in the process down there to try to make things work as they should. We presently have a third part-time water department employee learning, and we're going to educate him to be a water operator, because we have an aging operator that's going to want to retire. So we're doing our best with the funds that we have to protect the water system. Trust me, we had offers before, we'll come in and buy your system. Well, we don't want to do that. We all know what happened to these companies that come in, they're like National Grid, the community and those people that take the service have absolutely no choice in the matter. And if this was a publicly owned, you'd be really surprised at the difference they'd be looking for, for the hydrants. So there's not much more than I can say, other than we appreciate what you've done. This is what we're, this is what has come before us. We try to be good partners with the town. We try to do our best. We work with the fire department every chance that we have. The hydrants are there basically for, for putting out fires. That's basically all they're for, because you don't open them up anymore and play in them in the summertime. So, you know, that is a benefit to the town and, so.
So I have some follow-up questions. Is that water being metered that's coming out of the hydrants?
When it's, when it's flushed or when it's used?
When it's being used.
No, it is not. And we always go by what the water, by what the fire department says they use. So if they say they use this much, we believe what they say. We don't have meters on there.
And you charge the town for that water?
I don't believe so. I don't believe, I can't, I'll have to get back to you on it, but I do not believe so. I, I, if it's not metered, so I don't believe so. We do ask for an accounting, correct?
Yes.
Yes.
So the, the water department does ask you annually for, you know, accounting of trainings or any, any significant fires that have happened, to give an approximate gallonage as to what was used. I don't believe they charge an additional fee for that. I believe it's just a rental fee for the hydrants themselves.
And the reason why we have to have an amount of usage is because every year, we have to file information with the EPA to let them know how much water we've used. There's a limit on our water draw license, so we have to be able to tell them, this is how much money, how much water we've used. And there's a certain limit of unaccounted for water that we cannot go over without being in jeopardy of some problems. So that's why we ask the fire department how much they use, so that we can account, okay, so we know this much was used by the fire department. If we have a water main break, you know, we just have to do our best to try to figure out how much we've used. So we have to account for all the water that is, is pumped out of our, you know, all the water that we use. So we don't charge for it, but we do need to have an accounting of it.
Okay. So my concern is, we seem to be helping the water department quite a bit, and the water department has no problem with going up on our rates. You also use our municipal parking lot to access your building, your back garage, which I don't think we have an easement on. We're going to have to check on that to make sure, because you seem to be getting a lot of freebies, but you have no problem with charging the town for anything, any amount you can get from us.
That's untrue.
And I understand you guys got to make your money to be able to keep your overhead. But when we're sitting here and helping you and replacing your water lines at the cost of our grants, because it's costing us money, we're losing money to, because we could do more, we could extend sidewalks further if we didn't have to replace a water line, all right? We can make the project go a little further than it is if we didn't have to replace that infrastructure that we're doing, because it needs to be done. And you guys haven't been doing it and can't do it. So we've been doing it, okay? But yet, it seems like when the town questions you on the money and you go up on these fire hydrants, we just got to accept it. There's no cooperation. Is, is the water department willing to reduce the rates for what we've put in from, from our side to the water department to help you?
I can't answer that question. It takes a committee of three to make those kind of decisions, but I would tell you.
Can you bring it to your committee and ask them?
I will, but I will tell you that you need to, you need to understand when you say you are fixing our water lines, you're not fixing our water lines, you're fixing the district's water lines. All the people in those areas that are residents in this town, who already pay taxes to have decent stuff. So you're not, it's not, it's not the water department that you're, that you're helping out so much.
So what you're saying, what you're saying is our taxes are paying for their water lines?
No, that's not what I'm saying.
Because that's not what's happening. You're charging them a fee to replace those water lines and give them good water. It's not from the taxes. Our taxes aren't going towards the water lines, all right? You charge a fee to replace those water lines, and if we're replacing those water lines, you're getting that for free. And that doesn't seem fair to, to me.
I'll take it back to our depart, I'll take it back to the commissioners and when we have.
I'd like to see our rate reduced.
When we have our meeting, when we want to put water lines in and the people refuse to put the water lines in, then we'll just have to let them know that, I'm sorry, we can't put them in, because you don't want to, the people don't want to vote to put them in. And as I told you, if there's four people there and there's only five that show up and four people say no, there's no water lines go in. So if by good faith, you've been doing that, I think that's kudos to you guys for doing it. If it's been costing you money, I think a grant you don't have to pay for, I could be wrong, I don't know what it's costing you to do that.
No, we're allocating so much money to get, complete an entire project. And if we use a portion of that money to purchase water lines and replace them, that shortens our grant. So that means we can't go further out with a sidewalk or go down the road a little further. We can't extend it out further and do the extra things, okay? That, that takes away from that grant, all right? And that's what that's about.
In order for me to take this back, you're going to need to give me some monetary figure that you feel that you have given the water department or the water district and you feel that we need to adjust to, to make up that inconvenience or service or whatever you want to call it. You'd have to give us some kind of figure to go on, because once again, I'm at like, well, what are we talking, or how many millions of dollars are we talking, are we talking a thousand dollars?
How much does it cost the water district to replace a line?
I can't tell you.
Per foot?
I can't tell you per foot. I will come back to you with that, but I know we spent a lot of money for that 350 feet that we had. The prices, no doubt, have skyrocketed. I'm not sure what kind of piping you're using. You must be using the regular piping that we use. You're not using some kind of flexible piping that, because there is piping that you can use that slides through the old, we had our R cap representative was explaining to us that there is a new pipe that can be used. It's a flexible plastic line that actually slides through the old pipe, so that it's much less expensive, it still gives sufficient water pressure. So, you know, I don't know if you guys are using that or if you're using the regular standard stuff.
No, a lot of the pipe that gets replaced is tuberculated, so it's an eight-inch pipe, but it's got like that much available for water. So you just have to get rid of it. You can't put it.
So when you, when you tap pipe like that, it sure would be nice if we had a picture of it, so we could see it and have that understanding, because we, no one has told us that what you've replaced it is.
We have pictures of those water lines, right?
Yeah, we can get those.
Yeah.
And we can tell you how much line we've replaced over the years too for the water department and come up with a, a price of how much money we've saved you guys over the years replacing the water line. So it would be nice.
So should we put a, should we put a meter on the fire department so that we can recoup some of that money that, because we, we've been good to the town.
I don't know. You want them to keep on putting your fires out?
We've never, we've never metered the water. So I mean, pro quo, pro quo here, we've never metered the water over all of these years. We've always accepted what they've told us, you know, I mean, and, and it puts us in a sketchy spot with the EPA not knowing exactly how much water we use. We wouldn't charge you for it. But I mean, we've also done things for the community and it's, it's almost like you're just coming at us, you know, with your horns down, um, that we've actually done the district wrong or done the town wrong and, and we certainly don't feel that way.
Well, I'm not really hearing a lot of good things with the quality of the water in the, you know, at the town. So.
Well, the quality of the water of the town is we go through a green fil, a green sand filter now. Okay? So it does, what, what comes up out of the ground is, is awful. And it goes out of the well and it goes into the green sand filter and it comes out white. It does have chlorine in it. That is the state. That is not us. So we have no control whatsoever over whether it's got chlorine in it or not, but it is clean. It's not dirty.
The water's a lot better.
Except as the fire chief said, when, when the hydrants are turned on, there is an issue with that. If we, we had a problem with, um, the pump shop, it's not called the pump shop anymore, but they would, um, arbitrarily or not give us notice that they were, uh, running their sprinkler system and we would have a real problem with that. Well, we ended up having to take some action with them that now they contact us every time they're gonna do that. So we don't have that problem with that. That's been over a year now that we haven't had them, um, using their, uh, system and stirring up all sorts of gunk because we can, uh, manage to turn off things to keep that water from getting into the, getting into the rest of the lines.
So I, I would like you to look at, um, how you can reduce our rate. We'll come up with a number of how much we've replaced. And have we repre, on these projects, have we replaced the fire hydrants too? Included or was the water department giving them to us?
I think there was one that was replaced on.
We've replaced some.
Up on, um, I want to say Prospect Street or School Street.
Because that's technically their property that we replaced. I'd like to know how much money we saved them.
And, and you know, I, I appreciate what you're talking about there, but there's really no asking us what we want. You're not asking us what you want us to do when you come and say, listen, we're gonna be doing this. You're not asking us, you're telling us that this is what the grant is, this is what we're gonna do. So it's not like we're sitting there, um, ignoring a need. You're coming to us like Mr., Mr. Duffy did here and told us via email what the plan is. So it's not like we're ignoring, uh, and not interacting, but you're not talking to us about it until, until it's.
So when we come in and we find a water line and it's reduced down to an inch, okay? From an eight-inch pipe and the only amount of water that's getting through it is an inch, right?
Yeah.
There's a problem.
Obviously, yeah.
And we're gonna fix that while we're there because you guys aren't gonna fix it. And we can't just leave it to the public like that.
And, and I know that's part of the grant. That's part of the grant.
It's, it's not part of the grant. It's what we add in there is extra to help.
That's not part of the grant?
We add that in there to be replaced because it's failing infrastructure. We have to replace that infrastructure because overall the residents deserve better.
Absolutely.
Okay? But in the end, we're saving the water department all that money to replace that infrastructure, which you're not gonna do in the first place because you don't want to spend the money on.
That's not true. It's not the water department that doesn't want to spend the money. It's the people that own the water department. Those are the people, those are the people that you have to think of. It's not the commissioners of the water department or our operators that say, we're not gonna do it. We don't want to do it. They have a right to vote, just like the people in town have a right to vote. If, if the people in town come and they vote and they say, we don't want to do this, so you can't do it. It doesn't mean that the selectmen don't want to do it. It means the people don't want to do it. So, so I wish that you would understand the fact that these final decisions as to whether or not something will be done does not rest with the water department. It rests with the water district. And the water district are the people that own the water department. They are the people that pay their water bills. So I can take this back, but when we come to this kind of thing, it's still gonna have to go before the district. And if the district says no, the district says no.
Okay.
So you just have to understand that. I want you to understand that, that the water department is not that building over there and it's not that plant. The wa, those are just the people that worked there. The people that own it, that make the ultimate decision as to what we do are the people in town that, that pay the bills, the property owners that don't live in town that pay the bills. Those are the people that will decide whether or not a specific area pipe gets paid for, whether certain costs go up, whether they're willing to take on more, a larger bill to do the things that they, that we feel need to be done. It's still their decision. Just like the townspeople make the decision, no matter what you guys bring up, no matter what the school department brings up, no matter what entity brings up, it's ultimately their decision and it's ultimately the district.
And we, we absolutely understand that. We know how it works. We, we understand.
I know you do, but I want to make sure that you can't.
And not all residents pay into the water because a lot of us have wells.
Correct. Only, only the people that do.
And only the people that are using that water.
Correct.
Are paying into it.
Correct.
Okay.
It's a small number actually for, for what you're talking about. It's a small, it's actually a small group of people.
Does the water department have a capital improvement plan?
We do.
Okay. And you're putting money into that?
We are, but it wasn't being done with the previous, um, the previous team that was there.
So in the future, are you gonna have money to replace these lines that we, when we open up the roads?
We certainly are heading that way. We're doing the best that we can. As I talked to Jim the other day, the, I mean, our capital, capital improvement in town has only taken off recently. So we're not so much different than you. Uh, we didn't have that push to do that. We have a different mindset that's working in that area now. And we understand that we need to do those things to be prepared to meet the needs that we're gonna have. But it wasn't previously done. I mean, that, that thing has been open since 1920. That's when that was, that was turned into water district was 1920. And it's over the last six or seven years that these steps are being taken to help us prepare to do the big things that we need to do. So.
I'm glad to hear that.
Yes. I mean, we're doing the best that we can. Right.
Um, again, we'll come up with our numbers and hopefully in the future, when we open up the ground, large projects, you guys will have the availability of funds to purchase the lines and place them in there. Um, so they, the town can extend their grant money further. And are you guys looking for grants?
Uh, we've had a change in our office staff, so I know Carol Sanders doesn't work for us per se anymore. She is on that, um, grant. Um, I am not in the grant program. I, I'm not certain who we should put in there.
So you guys should get somebody educated on the grant program and start looking for grants because that is money that's out there and if you don't use it, other communities are gonna use it. And they could save you a lot of money. The town aggressively goes after every grant we can possibly find. Every department's looking for grants and Mr. Ferraro, you probably spent half your day doing grants.
A lot of it, yeah.
Yeah, we're, we're a volunteer, we're a volunteer group down there basically. So, you know, we'll, we'll do our best to try to look into those things. I mean, I've, I've got, um, more on my shoulders than I ever anticipated having on my shoulders being down there, but I'll do my best to see what we can do to get, get looking into the grants. It's probably something that I'm gonna have to take on unless I can get one of the other commissioners to be able to shake some time loose to do so.
Okay. Anymore? Thank you, David. Rich?
Um, you did contribute pipe to one project, right?
We did. We did. That was.
Pipe at a lower cost at one point and then piping went up around COVID or something like that, right?
We had bought piping to loop, uh, terrace, uh, hillside, hillside terrace. Okay, we had done, we had bought piping to do that. For many reasons that I really can't go into at this point, it didn't get done. We've been trying to do that since 2018. So the pipe was there. So we actually used that pipe up at the water plant to help us, um, make a, make a more direct line to the plant from the wells. RH White replaced that piping and put it back down at, um, hillside for us to use. When the ground was opened up, up on Richardson Street and you guys came forward and said, listen, there's 350 feet of line up there. That's the only section that wasn't used. We said, here's the pipe.
Okay.
And actually, as a matter of fact, there were, there was some money encumbered to help with the costs. And that money is there and I know it's been mentioned before that we encumbered money for the costs and it's still there. So when I hear you tell us that we're not helping, we have a resource there that we've held on to. And I know we brought it up a couple of times that it's there. I know we spoke with Jeremy. I don't know. I hate to give a date on that, but I think it was sometime last year that it's there, um, for the work that was done. So yes, we did. And we, now we have to replace that line. And my thoughts at our last meeting that we had since hillside is gonna be done, the time for us to loop it would be now while the work is being done there. So what we have to do is we have to go forward. We have to talk to, um, our vendor, find out what the price is. We have to go before the district, see if we can get that looped because it's a dead end. So what happens with a dead end is it doesn't continue around and sediment sits there. So we have to go more often and, and flush it. So our, our aim a long time ago in 2018 was to get that done.
So the CDBG grant is gonna pay for the, for hillside, but not the looping? And then you're gonna pay for the looping?
Well, that's, that's our hope. Okay? I'm in the process of looking into it. I brought it up at the meeting when I read this. I said, you know, this would be the perfect time for us to loop. What do I need to do? Who do I need to talk to? I need to talk to our, our superintendent, have him get us the price. I'm not sure when, when will all this take place? I know it's April 14th, uh, the, the deadline for the application. What's the timeframe for the project to begin?
I don't know.
You don't know? Okay. Well, that makes it even better.
If the grant hasn't even been accepted yet, you know, there's, where the application goes in, it takes a couple of months to get accepted.
So if we have to try twice to get the money from the district, we'll probably be able to get that. But we need to, we need to do our homework to get into that position to be ready to do that. So, I mean, we do what we can. You know, that's, that's all we can do and it's on the backs of people that are already, you know, probably feeling the pressure and if, if they're not willing, then, you know, we keep putting whatever little bit we have into the capitals, capital, um, fund. We're, we don't, we're nonprofit, so, you know, we don't have much revenue. So.
So I have one more question. Sorry.
He has one more. I got one then, after you.
Okay. Uh, now it's come to our attention that our tax collector is collecting the water department's tax abatements for the leans.
I heard that. Yes, I understand that.
Why is that being done?
I can't tell you that. I will find out why at our next meeting and I'll come back and I'll give you your report.
Because we, we pay the tax collector to, to work for the town, not work for the water department. You guys have your own people, your own thing, your own votes. Um, so it's, it's almost like you're utilizing our collection free of charge.
Well, I'm gonna say something that I hate to say, uh, because I don't agree with it, but that's the way it's always been done. And just because that's the way it's always been done is not the fact that it should always continue to be done that way. Uh, once again, you have a new group of, of people down there. This is my second term down there. I'm only halfway through my second term. Um, Dave Kelly, that he's only, um, he's just gotten into his first full term on his own and Loretta's been there for a little bit longer than that. So you've got a, a very, um, vibrant group of people that want to make things better. These things were laid down years and years ago, as far as I know, probably back all the way to 1920.
So my, my thought pattern on that is if we're gonna be doing, doing your collections for the water department, then maybe the town should be getting compensated for that at a lower rate.
Give me time, give us time to look into this. I understand that. Um, once again, the, the lower rate is, is taking that money out of the capital improvements that you want us to have to buy the pipe with. So it's kind of a circular thing, but give us time to see what our options are.
Paying somebody to do your tax liens and do all that stuff, that's money that you guys would be paying anyways.
Right.
To, for somebody to do that.
Well, it just, it just came to my attention at our last meeting, which was yesterday. So I can't address it other than to say I now am aware of that and we'll look into seeing what we can do to make that different. I don't necessarily think it worked out as well as it should, um, when we do that. And as I said, this goes way back in time and we have no problem trying to make things better. We certainly don't want you to think we've been trying to take advantage of you because I haven't been trying to take advantage of you. The water commissioners have not been trying to.
We don't think it's you at all. We don't think.
Right. We understand that. We understand that.
You're a great person. We love you. But just.
But I understand your frustration.
Things that are imbalanced and we need to balance those scales now.
And you know, the thing is, we have a meeting that's posted every, every, uh, month, every two weeks, we have a meeting. And you're more than welcome to come down there anytime with any issues or questions you have. If you find something that you think is an imbalance, you can come to that meeting as well as I can come to this meeting and you can tell us what issue you feel needs to address. We've done that with Jeremy. When Jeremy was saying that he wasn't getting feedback on certain things, we've invited him to come to our meeting and make sure that we as commissioners understand what, what the issue is. I mean, we're, we, we're not mind readers. No one ever told us really that the tax, it never told me anyway, that the town tax person was handling the liens. So now that we know that there's an issue, we don't have a problem looking into seeing how we, how we correct that, whether we do that ourselves, whether there's some kind of a compensation to the town. But we can't correct a problem that we don't know that there is. So if you have a problem, send us a letter. Karen can send us a letter. We can address it that way. Come to the meeting. We can address it that way. Send us something that you want to talk about, because I had, had to ask Karen what this meeting was about. I thought it was just about giving you, um, the rates. And she gave me a little bit of information, just explaining to me about the replacement with a, with a grants. So if you tell us what you're having a problem with, we can come to a meeting with answers to your questions instead of me saying, listen, I'll get back to you because I don't know. And that's a much more efficient use of your time. Um, and it's, it's much more beneficial. It gets taken care of in a timely manner. So we can look into that and we'll see what we can do. If you have any other more issues or problems, send, send us your data that you have. Send us, and we'll discuss it in a meeting and we'll bring it before the, we'll bring it before the, uh, district at our next annual and see where they want to go.
I agree. Rich, you have another question?
So back to the grant writing thing. Um, they are complicated and it's hard for volunteers to do them. So I would, I guess, encourage if, maybe look into a grant writer, maybe partner with other water districts. Um, one of our goals with hiring a town administrator is that the grants brought in would help pay the salary of that position. And, um, you know, if you get a good grant writer, they're gonna be able to bring in a lot of grants and basically pay for themselves.
Okay. Well, we'll reach out to other water districts.
Yeah.
See if we can connect with them and, um, we'll go from there. Appreciate that.
Cindy, have a question?
Sure.
How many houses are in the water district?
I believe there's 638 bills. Now those bills, some of them, um, are multifamilies. So that's the best answer that I can give you at this point for that. Some of the people, the people that are using the minimum amount of water, which are generally single older people, their bills are generally a hundred dollars. So we had, do have some people and we, we actually also have Heritage Village as one of those bills. Um, they received a pretty good abatement because they had people, uh, vacant areas. So any multi-units have filed abatements if they, if they don't have, if they're not using the unit. So that's, that's the best answer I can give you at this point, Derek. I wish I could be more specific.
No, that's fine. Thank you, Cindy. Yeah. And I appreciate that you're here, that you came, even not knowing exactly what, what was gonna happen. Um, looks like I'm one of those. Looks like I'm one of those six hundred and thirty-eight.
I am too.
I am too.
And over the course of fifteen years that I've been in town, I, I can tell you kudos to what you, you have done. Water is, it's really good at my house. That's the only one I can tell of.
It's way better.
Yeah.
The chlorine is kind of a problem, but the quality of the water is way better.
I kinda like it. I kinda like it.
Do you feel clean after your shower?
Yeah. When I'm coughing too.
Disinfected?
I need a drink of water, it helps. No, anyway, but, um-
Derek, sorry. Let me finish.
Oh, let me finish. So I appreciate that as a user. You, you've done a great work and everything. Do you have any questions?
If the chair would be willing, there's a consideration I think that should be made that it's been touched on but not explicitly addressed, if you may.
Yes, sir.
Ray Capaco, a resident. I, I just think it's important to point out a consideration that this, the grant funding for infrastructure projects can't be so cleanly sorted out when it comes to the, the water lines. And it, you would be asking the grant to be holden to the, the water district acting on a vote of that membership in order for the grant to go forward. So the, the whole project that just got done recently up on School Street, et cetera, they would be waiting for the approval to replace those water lines by the water district. And how is that complication gonna work to effectively get that project done? It's just a consideration. I'm not saying it couldn't be done. Maybe it would be simple, I don't know. I'm just saying it has to be considered that it's not so simple to sort it out. And more to the point, which I think Cindy spoke to multiple times, unfortunately, should only take one time to understand this. It's not the water district as if it's a private entity like the pump shop charging the town. It's a municipal entity. It overlaps the private-public realities. You can't separate it. You're saving by, by using monies to get the infrastructure, the water lines replaced, the, the, the grant that the town's receiving from CDBG or the state or the feds, whoever's actually funding that money. You're not saving the water, you're not saving the commissioners and their private corporation money. You're saving those rate payers that money. 'Cause that, if it costs three hundred thousand dollars to do a hundred feet of piping, you, that's three hundred thousand dollars that you and Rich and the other six hundred and thirty-six people aren't paying. Now, as someone who's on a private well, I can take exception to that because that's three hundred thousand dollars that I'm not participating in in any way, shape, or form. I can be glad that you're saving some money and you're saving some money and Cindy and six hundred and thirty-five other people are saving money. So it's, it's, it, the, the, the way it got presented by the board member was that they're bilking the town, they're not bilking the town. They're, they're saving, the, the town using the grant money is saving those rate payers. It's, it's, it's not such a clean distinction. And then I have one other comment I feel I have to make. The liens that are being processed by the town, Dave, is minimal. I don't, Cindy promised she would take it back to her commissioners and they would discuss. But I can't see how this is costing the town any serious amount of money. I thought Carrie did an excellent job last week when she explained it very clearly, that it's always been this, done this way, and let's all agree, just because something's always been this, done this way, doesn't mean it should continue. Maybe it shouldn't. But it's of minimal, petty. It, 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 you speak about being petty, that they're being petty to charge a little bit more for the hydrants, which I'm not advocating for or against, by the way. I'm simply making a point. The use of the parking lot to get to their garage, that's petty. The, the amount of energy that our tax collector has to go, has to go through to process liens, which get bundled, just like Cara explained it last week. I'm not gonna try and re-explain it, I'm not the tax collector. She explained it perfectly well last week, okay? So you need to listen to what's being said and understand it, really understand it. Don't you say you understand it. Actually understand it. It's not so simple to break it all out. You wanna look at that water district as this private entity that the town has no control over. And I think that's the real problem. Is I think what you're really resenting is you have to pony up some money to a private entity because you don't have total control over it. That's what I have to say about that.
Thank you, Ray.
I do have one comment.
Yes, Karen.
Yes.
How many people come to your meeting to do voting on this? Would you guess?
The most we've ever had has been eleven. And that's when we're, and that's when we're voting in a new commissioner.
I don't know, I think it's been more. I've been to meetings, I think it's more than eleven. I would, I was gonna say like thirty. I mean, it's not much.
Well, when we had, when we had the voting for the plant, yes.
A ton of people showed up.
But the last meeting we had, my husband was there and Dave Johnson, that, that was the last meeting that we had for the water district. The previous ones, I'm, I'm visualizing that in my mind, there was no more than six. There are not a lot of people that go. You know, when you think of the ratio of how many people come to the town meeting, when we have, what do we have, five thousand people in town? When you think about the ratio of that versus how many people come to the water department meeting, it's understandable. You got about the same amount of people that wanna come. You got ten percent of the people wanna come. So if we've got those, that many people paying bills, it's, they don't wanna go out. They don't wanna, they don't wanna go. You know, but we did have a lot during the, during the effort of trying to get that plant put into place, you know? And, and people are tied up. They have their jobs, they have their families, they have a lot going on and, you know, some people, sometimes people just don't figure it matters. You know, it's unfortunate, I have to say.
It's hard to get people to participate.
Yes, very hard to get people to participate. So, anything else?
No, thank you very much.
Thanks.
Thank you very much. And I'll, I will take those things back and I'll await whatever it is that you have to send me to add to that, okay?
Thank you.
Next, we have a discussion on any departmental comments on the newly proposed wage scale with a possible vote to amend the proposed wage scale anticipated vote.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, good evening. So as our, as instructed at the last meeting, I sent out the proposed wage scale that was approved at the last meeting. Before you this evening, what is a, a draft with one recommended update after speaking to the fire chief, which was on the EMT. First of all, he is requesting a name change from EMT in training to part-time EMT hourly in training. That will, that will better distinguish what that, that, that wage scale is about, which is FD one in the group. In the original proposal, it was proposed to start at eighteen dollars and forty-one cents. In the, if you look at our current wage scale, that we would be at eighteen ninety-five is what fiscal year twenty-five is at. So to realign, and again, continuing with the trend of, of the pace of, of the increase that was given three years ago, the, the fire chief is recommending at a step three to start the, a step three in the, in the Collins Center report, to start it at nineteen thirty-four an hour. I don't think that that's unreasonable request from, from the department. I did also have a conversation with the town clerk, and I believe she's gonna be speaking about her, her request tonight. And those were the comments that I had received from department heads.
So as of now, the wage scale is set? That's, that, so there's just been like one or two little changes?
There's only one, one proposed change tonight, which is FD one. And I'm not sure what the town clerk is gonna be, you know, requesting.
Okay.
Is it a good time to call the town clerk? Sure.
Well, I don't think we- With the fire department- I wanted to know more about that. The only reason I proposed that was because if you looked at the current wage scale, it started less than what we're currently paying now. So it didn't make any sense. That was, you know, it moved it, I asked, requested it to move it to the step where it would be next in line to be able to be paid, 'cause it, it wouldn't make sense to go backwards. So that was why I made that request.
Well, I think the whole purpose of the pay scale was to get an average of what the communities were and what the average was being paid. And we, we are paying more to hire our EMTs at the base pay at the step one than other communities are. And I think it was to average out what all the communities have and what they're starting their employees at. And we just happen to be higher on that scale. So it was reduced down to compensate for that because we're actually hiring our employees at more, more than they were. They'd be getting in another community.
Yeah, it's, again, without knowing exactly how they polled the other towns on that, that, that wage scale is specifically for just EMTs, not firefighter EMTs, just EMTs. That, I don't, I can't see-
Well, part, part-time, right?
Part-time positions, yes. So, so, you know, but again, it wouldn't, it, it just, to me, it wouldn't make sense to have, you know, to be paying less than what our minimum currently is.
Well, it doesn't mean any of you guys would make less because they would be making, 'cause they're getting to get two percent?
Correct.
Whatever it is, with what their current rate is, and they would be put at that step on the new pay scale.
Two percent of their current hourly wage and then placed on the wage scale.
Right. So they wouldn't be going back in any money.
No, I understand that.
Just, just the new people that you start them at would be starting at a lower rate. Because that's what the average is throughout the communities.
I, I just don't think that's a feasible rate for that position, to be honest. It's not. I mean, we, we haven't paid close to that rate even the last few years, so.
Well, with that said, every department can make that argument.
I mean, you know, I, I don't, I don't know what else to say besides that, so.
Yeah, you're being completely sensible. Thank you, thank you. It's completely sensible, it's easy to understand.
I absolutely understand it.
That-
Purpose of having this scale done was to look at all communities that are surrounding us in that size and factor in what the average would be to start those employees.
If I may? Yes, sir. The fire chief is never going to use step one if you implement it the way it is proposed without making any adjustment to it. He currently could use the old scale, which, I think, if I'm understanding this correctly, the old scale would be more beneficial at step one than the current, than the new one.
I have, I'd have to look at, I, 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 I don't have it in front of me. I'd have to look. My, my point is, is that, is that we always pay the minimum for EMTs coming in, and the minimum is currently, is currently higher than what the proposed scale is. And that, I just don't think that that's-
Right.
-gonna be beneficial to us.
In other words, he couldn't hire anyone who's new. He'd have to hire experienced personnel. And so it would make no sense to have a step one that will never allow for him to hire a new junior EMT. It's, it seems straightforward.
He, he would be able to hire. It would just, that person would start at that lower rate.
Okay. So before this, the previous step one, FY twenty-six, was eighteen forty-one, and then the change was made to make it nineteen thirty-four. So you're just saying at eighteen forty-one, you would not be able to hire anybody is essentially-
I mean, we're currently paying just under nineteen dollars. It's like eighteen, it's like eighteen ninety-four or something like that. I'd have to look at the, I don't have the, the wage scale in front of me, but.
So did you, oh, no, it, it got rejiggered a little bit.
Oh, because of the increases? Basically, you kind of-
There was a miscommunic-
You're exacting the increase.
When we set this wage scale, there was a miscommunication to what that particular category was supposed to be. There are some part-time shifts that I feel with that. It got labeled originally as EMT in training. These are not EMTs in training. This is an hourly wait for EMTs filling part-time shifts or EMTs that are going to trainings, paid hourly to do the trainings. Not like a junior EMT that's just coming in the door and they're not quite up to speed yet. So it was labeled not correctly. That was what I asked Mr. Ferrera to adjust. This is an hourly wait rate for part-time employees to work at the fire station and/or attend trainings when we do our ambulance trainings.
Okay, so in skills, it's like a bump up from what-
Yeah, these are not junior, these are not EMGs in training.
That was just, I asked them to fix that as well because that's not an accurate description of what that has ever been.
Yeah, okay. All right.
So you got that?
Yeah, it's fixed.
Okay. Yeah.
As long as the board approves it.
So the title's fixed, so we understand who goes under this, and they have a little more skills than what was previously done. And then therefore you get a little bump in pay because that's what you're paying.
Before I said that they need to be paid more. Do you, do you feel comfortable? Are you okay with that?
I'm good with it. I, I just think we all understand why we did this and we had a third party go out there and do this for us, is to take the emotion out of it. Because we all wanna pay our people much more. But are we paying them more than what other towns are paying them? Or are we paying them less? So the, this, this was to come in and say, "Okay, the average of these towns, and this is what we start at, and this is what we recommend that the scale be, and this is what you, most towns would start at right now." If we wanna pay more, we pay more. I, I have no problem with that. But it kinda goes away from having that third party come in here and do that for us. Mr. Chairman, can I say one other thing? So what I said to Mr. Ferrera too, and I'd like the board to consider, so if you look at that, five, six to seven of those communities that were polled, those are not communities that even have part-time or full-time firefighter EMTs. So in essence, a lot of those towns are dragging those numbers specifically for us down. That's why I'm requesting this. So we can be comparable to Ware or Palmer or Munson or, or Spencer that have full-time firefighter EMTs. But if they're taking the wage scale from a part-time or an on-call firefighter making fifteen dollars an hour in, in, in one of the Brookfields, for example, that's nothing, that's, we don't do that. You know, so it's totally different. So those few towns that don't have employees that work regular shifts and full-time shifts tend to skew those numbers, is all I'm trying to say. So you really need to compare the apples to the apples and look at what the other towns that are of full-time status, that have those actual positions are paying. It, they're great to poll, and a lot of the positions make sense 'cause they have town clerks and they have treasurers and they have this and that. But the fire department's totally different. They're called departments. So there's a difference there, and I just would like the board to understand that. That's the reasons why I'm requesting that.
All right, thank you for requesting that, Chief. And Mr. Chairman, if I may, to, to, to cap, to piggyback off of the chief, there's other communities, like the chief had mentioned in there, that are neighboring, that are much larger than us, like the Palmer, like the Ware, like the, like the Spencer, like the Southbridge, that also skew it the other way. So it's a kind of a balancing effect. So you have some smaller communities that, you know, the West Brookfields, the Brookfields, that will balance out because there's also larger communities in the mix too. Because they're neighboring.
Yeah.
But with what chief said, are we good with that? Are you good with that?
Yeah, no. I, I'm-
Yeah, no, I, I'm fine with this.
Do we need to vote right now?
Yeah, 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 if you want to take this, this, this recommendation, yeah.
I would like, do you have a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the, I'll make a motion to accept the amended wage scale per the recommendation of the town administrator for the fire department.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
David Dufresne, aye.
Rich A. Hacker, aye.
Derek Bailey's aye. Motion approved.
All right. We have the town clerk here as well.
Okay. It's your turn.
Hurry.
Hello.
Hello. You, you can move it like this.
To adjust.
Yeah.
I think you can hear me anyways.
This is not for us, this is for the cable.
Okay, fair enough. I'm here before you tonight. As you know, I sent in a request last week. I did watch it on TV. I wasn't able to stay last week as I didn't have my car. I know that you, you know, I was trying to move the grade numbers from my assistant, you know, to a different grade. You guys did vote that down. You did discuss, however, the possibility of a step increase with the way it is now. You said that I would have to come before you and request that. I know you talked about it, perhaps getting her a little more matched up with other people on the floor. The reason, one of the main reasons, other than the fact that she's an excellent worker, she has been here for, she's already been here long enough to have a step increase, even though on the new scale, she kind of starts at the minimum. Some people on the floor who are either in her bracket or not are walking through the door, you know, getting a step five. Step three. Gary from the assessor's office, who's already quit, even he had a step higher than the minimum, where she was only ever given the minimum. I also didn't know at the time I hired her that I could even come to you and ask for a step increase. It wasn't something that I had knowledge of. It wasn't something, you know, that the previous town clerk had knowledge of. I did start this quest a whole year ago at my budget meeting. I sat down, I talked with Jim and I said I would like to request a step increase. He said he would have to speak to the board. He would get back to me. He came back and said that, you all said that with the prospect of we were going to have an outside source, a whole new box, things could, you know, they were going to revamp possibly, you know, that things could increase within a couple of dollars on each step and that if we had moved her in steps then, that would put her in an even further spot a year later. You know, I was asked to please hold on for a year, speak to her. If you can just wait till next July, we're getting a whole new vamp. Things could be a lot better. As it turns out, it wasn't really all that much better as far as, you know, a dollar or two more an hour. She got about fifty-three cents, I think, you know, as far as what she's getting now from what she was making. That's just kind of not what I was expecting after being told, hang on and wait a year, you know? So now that I can ask for it, I can say she has the experience. She's been in my office since twenty twenty-two. She has worked seven elections with me, six town meetings. She has learned so much in that office that, you know, practically every aspect. I know you were saying as far as assistants go, you know, that's a, a different bracket. She is an assistant, but she is not like, I hire a bunch of assistants to help me. She is the assistant town clerk. That is her job title. Every town clerk has to appoint an assistant who has the same authorities as she does, as I do. Therefore, if I'm at a meeting, if I'm here, if I'm out, you know, she can sign a birth certificate. She can sign a death certificate. She, you know, only her and I can. It's not like I can hire a clerk. They can't, you know, come in and give somebody a birth certificate. It can only be her or I, you know. She is crucial to me. She is like having a right hand, you know, to my side. Every town clerk has one. Some town clerks have more, but they can probably afford more. When I started as town clerk, I wasn't even full-time. You know, Nancy made strides to get that position made full-time because there is so much work involved. I mean, election laws have changed tremendously, mail-in ballots alone. Leslie probably mailed out twenty-five hundred ballots just last year alone because it was a huge election year, you know, and having that experience is, is key. She knows elections as well as I do. Single-handedly, together, we got the new voting machines. We learned them together. We moved the polling places. We figured that all out together. I have two job evaluations from her where she scored outstanding in both of them. I mean, she does a terrific job. So I would, it's very hard. I'm trying to think of the word she used without, she feels like not really a slap in the face when she sees other offices come in brand-new off the street and get a step five, you know? I know that they have reasons for that. I'm not saying they don't deserve that. They probably have experience, even a bachelor's degree. I know Leslie doesn't have a bachelor's degree, but I don't see punishing her for not having something that wasn't required of her when I hired her. It is not in the job description. It doesn't say you need it. Therefore, to say she can't have a step increase because she doesn't have one, doesn't seem fair to me. She has been here longer than Board of Health personnel, the new planning board personnel. Two personnels have come in since Leslie and they both were started at a higher step based on municipal experience and/or a bachelor's degree. Leslie does now have that experience, three years worth, you know, of being with me. And I would respectfully ask that she could, for the new budget in, I could give her a step advancement.
Okay, so I, I hear that you have an excellent assistant and you wish, you're proposing to have her move up on the scale. And let's see how, indeed, what is possible. Is there any way we can help in this?
Like, like I said at the last meeting, I think it's, you know, I, I, I would agree that, you know, if, if the board wants to give a step, they, they're warranted to do that.
I would very much like to see her get something around step four, where she could be at twenty-one something an hour. That's still less money than the people on the floor who have not been here as much as her, one of whom is in the same category as her, which would be planning board. That would be, from what this step proposes, it would be an additional dollar and fifty-three cents. It wouldn't be two dollars or, I know the move from last week was way far up, you know, in dollars. This would be roughly, if I did the math correctly, about a dollar fifty more than where she's at. She's at a step one, which is the minimum in that category, where she didn't even, she has been here long enough to have a step increase. If someone new came in on the floor in that same category, they're going to make the same amount as her and she already got a step increase in the old system. Like she is, I'm not, it just feels like they took away her step. I know they did it money-wise. Like I get how the math drives, but I don't get how she's now grouped in the same minimum. I heard you say at the meeting last week that you would, this is to be considered like step one is a minimum and, you know, versus the old. But she's, her, her, her math comes out in step one, which would be the same as someone through the door and she's been here long enough to already have gotten a step increase. So I don't, that much I still, I can't say is agreed. Regardless of that, you know, I thought she was going to be at a step two. I would be asking if you, if she could be advanced to a step four to start the new budget. Then I would know to put the monies in for that based on experience. I can't say based on a bachelor's degree she doesn't have, but she has, you know.
Yeah, okay, so we, we hear what you're telling us. Rich, do you have any feedback?
Well, I don't know. It's an interesting point. She's been here three years, right?
She was here, in past September is when she got her step because she started municipality with Dawn before she came to me. But she has been in my office, it'll be three years later in twenty-five, that she's been in my office, yes, full-time.
She would, she's on the same step as a person who would come in. If someone came into that job with no experience or no nothing, we would give them a step one, right? We couldn't justify anything higher. And that's what she's making. So I, I, that's kind of an interesting point. David, you have any?
Well, I'm, I've never heard any complaints about her. She's always been an outstanding employee. She's always helpful. She's knowledgeable about the job. And I think when we first took on this is we made it so department heads could come to us and request a higher step for their employee based on their experience, their knowledge and what they've done and whether they've received outstanding evaluations. If you came to us and said, well, I want to get a step increase, but she's received two poor evaluations and, you know.
I have them right here signed by Jim. They promise you.
I've had eight complaints in the past three weeks about her. I, I'd probably say that's a definite no.
Right.
But can I see the evaluations real quick?
Sure.
The evaluations are help, there to help the department heads.
The first year she was in was too soon to get one. They, but.
Yeah, we just started. We just started.
And the best page they're signed?
And that's why we really made sure the evaluations are being done.
Exactly.
And so you can give a fair rating of your, your people.
And she did step up and help in the Board of Health. I know that's outside of the realm. That really has nothing to do with that other than she had to make up the work. She was missing an hour a day down there and she did. Everything was, you know. She's been out sick all week. She's literally been texting me, don't do my work, leave it for me. I'll do it when I get back. And I'm like, I really don't have a choice. I've been kind of busy without you. But I mean, that's just, she has drive.
She's in this, she's in group D here.
Group D?
Yes, I understand why you voted against moving her to a group C when it was explained to me and I get, she's not a department head. I mean, I know she doesn't do payroll. She doesn't do accounts payable, but she does do almost everything that I do. And when I'm busy doing stuff like that, she's handling all the paperwork. I mean, mostly all of it, business certificates, birth certificates, all of that.
I've seen her in action. I, I've seen you in action. I think you two guys do a, a very good job.
We make a good team. I would really hate to lose her.
You do a really outstanding team. You know, if it was just for me, I would propose to have her in step seven, but I don't know what these two guys are going to say.
Oh, well, well, I'm sure that's not, I'll come back next week with a new proposal.
Slap him, will you? There's a reason why there's three of us out there.
Yeah, exactly.
Okay, eight?
Balance it out a little bit.
They do a great job.
So I have a question for Mr. Ferrara.
Yes, sir.
Have you had any incidents or complaints about the assistant as town clerk?
No, no, not, not at all. As I, as I stated at the last meeting, I think Leslie does an excellent job and she's very dedicated. Every, anything I've ever asked, she's always very helpful, always very pleasant. Step eight?
So.
She's excellent with the townspeople too. I mean, that's something you don't, you, you can read a resume all you want. Until you see it in action, it makes you nervous. You know, if you can't interact, we have people all day long outside of Carrie's office at tax time and we, we probably have the steadiest flow because there's just so many things they're coming in for. Even the tough ones, we, we take it and we say, we will help you as best we can and that's just the way it is.
So what did you say? You proposed in a step four?
I, I would like to see her somewhere in the twenty-ones. I was thinking, shoot for five, see if they'll give me four, but honestly, I mean, they're difference of about fifty cents apiece, you know?
See, I was right. Step eight. Come on, he, you appreciate who's good worker. You guys can shut me down, but.
I have to pull you from negotiations from now on.
Yeah.
Like you said, that's why we are three here.
But she deserves it.
I, I, I think it's a fair request and the department heads come to us to advocate for their employee. The employee has worked hard, got the training, no complaints, no issues. I, I don't see a problem with the request.
At what step?
The requested step.
Four.
Four.
Okay, I can.
Are you okay with four?
I'm okay with four.
I want it five.
I, I was, I should have shot with five, but I really thought I was going to get thrown out of here. So I figured four.
No, we will never do that.
Well, I mean, there's also a lot of budget pressure. There's, I mean, what's, health insurance is going up fourteen percent?
Health insurance, everything's going up.
So everything is going up. So we have to be careful.
I would greatly appreciate a vote for step four. Honestly, that would be.
The question is, I don't think we can, well, I don't think we can vote on this tonight, correct?
Yeah, you, you, you can. I mean, she just needs to put it into her budget.
This would be the budget for July one, for fiscal year twenty-six, yes.
Have to get approved at town meeting.
Right. But as far as doing a vote, it's not listed on the agenda.
Well, it's under the wage scale. It's, it's under the discussion on the departmental comments and newly proposed ratio with a possible vote to amend the proposed wage scale. So if you want to list it separately, you, you, we can at the next meeting if you want, or, you know, I think you, you'd be safe taking a vote tonight. Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, let's do it.
Okay, I'll start, I'll make a motion to start the assistant town clerk at a step four on the grade scale D on the new wage scale.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
David Dufresne, aye.
Rich A. Hacker, aye.
Derek Bailey's aye.
Thank you very, very much. Thank you all.
Do you have anything more?
With that, I'm heading home.
I, I, I'm not sure if the, if the senior senator, I didn't get anything from her. I'm not sure if she's.
No, I, I basically was mostly here in support of, if you'd like to think about your ideal campaign. Sharon Melly, Senior Senator Director and Resident. Yeah, we looked at the wage class and it, it is hard when you're, when you've been there. Like I've had Gail Winder, she's our general helper. She's been there. She worked from two thousand six to fourteen, came back in seventeen. They made me start her back at a minimum. And now she's been here all this time and now she's again back at a minimum. I've been there ten years. I'm back at a minimum. So I'm just, I appreciate that you're all trying, you are really trying to bring the pay up and I do appreciate that and you can't bump everybody up. I get it. So, but I just wanted to let you know that, yeah, it, it, it does, it is disheartening when, when you see the new person coming in is going to make what you're making, even though you have the experience, you've been there.
That shouldn't happen.
So, Mr. Chairman, if I may, just on, on the comments, in, in what I initially said when we, when we first discussion about this Collins Center, where you are on the wage scale, the, the numbers, the, the box, that's got to be, you know, you know, wiped out of people's minds. It has nothing to do with, with, with this. And so people are still getting increases. And, and so, you know, I, I, you know, I think the, the senior center director, you know, makes some points about, you know, you know, what level of increases. Yes, it's, it varies per box, but people are getting increases. And so, you know, that, that's the main part of it.
Right off the bat, you're getting 2%.
I, yeah, I know, yes.
And then you're being bumped up to the next higher step or the step equivalent. You're never going to fall less
No.
than what your current pay is with 2%.
I understand.
So wherever you fall in that scale, you're going to make more. So if you fall in that scale at a step five, you're a step five now. You moved up from a one to a five, but you're making more money.
And so I'm sure some people did. I'm sure people did. The average, you know, they did an average study.
So if you, say, say for example, I don't mean to put you on the spot.
I understand it, but go ahead.
I don't mean to put you on the spot, but say for example, you know, your particular salary, okay? You know, you're going to be getting over a $2,000 increase. Okay, even though you're, you're at a step one, it, it's a $2,000 increase from what you're currently making.
I understand that. And, and mine aside, my general helper, she's not making that much more and she's been there forever. She's been there, you know, and I think her experience should come in, into play, you know, I really do. I'm not on the agenda. I just came to basically support Leslie. And just to make my, you know, just to let you know that it, it, you know, when you look at it and you see what that, that is the minimum of what the job is in the area.
Yeah, but the minimum will also have an increase for the people that are going to that step.
Yeah, I know. But if they were already at, say, a step four or a step two and now they're going four.
Yeah, the, the steps don't, don't mean anything. Those numbers don't mean anything. It has nothing to do with, you know, what the, what the increase will be.
I know, but what it means is like if Gail left tomorrow, the person coming in is going to get the same money with no experience. That's what I'm saying. That, that, that's kind of the rub there. That, that's the, that's all I'm just saying. I just wanted to make a comment to, to, I appreciate that you're trying.
People's salaries go, you know, people's hourlies go up just like inflation, you know?
Yeah, but someone else coming in might start at a step two or a step four, just like we just saw. So I'm just saying, I'm sure there's others on the wage class that.
Well, so presumably, this step one anticipates that if we hire somebody next year, you want to have a step one that makes it attractive, even if it matches somebody who's been there. You still have to think about next year, two years from now, you know what I mean? So we can't make a step one that's too low because then we won't bring anybody in. It seems like the nature of the beast.
Right.
As you're working. As you're working, everybody else is going up too. So even if you bring in somebody new, they're still gonna be making more money potentially, even in that same spot.
I'm, I still can't find a custodian. And, and even with the little increase, I don't think we're gonna find a van driver custodian. It's really hard. It's, um, that's a hard job. That's gonna be difficult. Jim can attest to that.
Yeah, I think the challenge there is, it's part-time, right? And, and there's limited hours. So you gotta find a unique individual that can fill that void.
And the responsibility, it, it's not just cleaning the building and light maintenance. It's the responsibility of driving our seniors to their appointments. That's, um, a lot of people don't want that responsibility. It, it goes on their license if anything happens, so, um, it, it, it's a challenge. It's a challenge. But I just wanted to, to make that point, that's all.
My, my suggestion would be is if a department head truly wants to advocate for their employee, they should do exactly what the Town Clerk just did. And advocate for your employee.
And not have Leslie's evaluation.
Yes.
Have evaluations of your employees.
Yeah, make sure you do your evaluation.
Have why, why that person is at a higher level for you. And advocate for that person. You see how it just went?
I did.
We asked all the questions. We agreed. We may not always agree. And we may say, "Well, we're not seeing that and, you know, yeah, the person has been here two years, but they really haven't done anything beyond the two years other than just showing up for work."
Yeah.
So you can't juice up the evaluations either. It's gotta be fair.
No, 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 no. We don't, no, no, no.
So, you know, I, I noticed.
And Jim oversees those, as does my board.
Yeah, I mean. Right. I mean, Leslie had a three on one of those items, so she was successful, but she had a lot of fours and fives, so.
I, that's mainly why I was here, was to support Leslie.
Yeah.
I just thought I would make my comment as well.
No, no, it's valuable. It helps.
Thank you. And I do appreciate that you guys are really trying to, um, it, it just showed how underpaid the town had gotten. Um, I think when I started in fourteen, prior to that, that was the first year, I believe, if I'm not mistaken, that there was even an increase every year. You had to wait three years to even get the two percent. So it's come a long way. It's come a long way, so I appreciate it. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Right. Anything else on this item?
I think that should close out the, uh, the wage scale and departments are formulating their budgets now.
Okay. Number two, discussion with a possible vote on a contract renewal between the Town and Fire Chief Adam Lavoy. Anticipate a vote.
I don't know how I feel about this now. We need to make some pay cuts here somewhere.
Can we give him a raise?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, um, members of the board. Before you this evening is, um, a, a Fire Chief, uh, Employment Agreement uh, that was, uh, negotiated in an executive session last week. Um, we, uh, are going to be retaining, hopefully, the services of, of Chief Lavoy for another three years. Uh, his contract was set to, uh, expire, uh, this fiscal year on June thirtieth. And this new contract would go into effect on, uh, July one. So, uh, it is before the board for ratification this evening.
Yeah, can we make a motion?
Unless you wanna hear him speak before we.
Leslie wants it. He's just too good.
Good evening, everyone. Adam Lavoy, Fire Chief. Uh, first and foremost, thank you for having me here tonight. Um, thank you for, for sitting with me the other day. Um, it's been a pleasure to work for the town. This is my, uh, closing out my eighteenth year full-time here, uh, with the department and my thirteenth year as Fire Chief. Um, it's been an absolute pleasure to work for the town and, and the people that I work with, the Police Department, Highway Department, all the town employees. Um, you know, done a lot of good things together and I, I feel like, uh, we have a good rapport with the town. So I'm, I'm very honored to be considered to come back here for another three years and with the board's, uh, okay, I'd like to do that.
Very good. Thank you very much, Chief. Good, good. Let's make a motion.
Okay. All right, I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion to approve the contract between the Town and the Fire Chief, Adam Lavoy.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
David Dufran, aye.
Richi Hacker, aye.
Derek Bailey's, aye.
Yes.
Congratulations, Chief.
Well, it came off. It came off, so.
Blue?
Yeah.
I got blue too. And then writes red.
They should write red for fire, right?
Yeah.
Then we sign the Ch- Chief Mallett's contract. In the future, we do blue. Right?
There you go.
You need to sign too.
Uh, Fire Chief Monthly Report. This better be a good report.
I know.
No slacking on this report.
All right. Thank you so much. Uh, so, uh, my monthly report for January two thousand twenty-five, we responded to forty-five fire incidents in January, which included eleven motor vehicle accidents, five medical assists, two activated alarms, uh, two canceled calls, nine service or assist calls, four power line incidents, three investigations, two rescues or, uh, slash extrications, two brush fires, one vehicle fire, three mutual aid requests, and one illegal burn. Uh, we responded, responded to sixty-nine calls for EMS in two thousand twenty-five, January two thousand twenty-five. And, uh, we had eighteen ALS intercepts required for those calls. Uh, we did four smoke and CO inspections, three propane tank inspections, one oil tank inspections. We had several visits to the schools and a lot of the other things we do normally that I don't really list here on the report. Um, in January two thousand twenty-five, we're, EMS did not hold a regular training due to some scheduling conflicts and some other things we have going on. Foreign fire personnel trained on ice rescue techniques up at Cummins Pond. They're always good enough to allow us to go up there to, uh, do some training up there, which was, uh, a, a great training. The members really enjoyed that. Um, in terms of the budget, we're looking okay. I don't see any major, you know, major red flags. They're really keeping an eye on it. But, uh, you know, certainly, I'm always looking for, for things right now, but, uh, you know, generally speaking, we're doing okay. I'm currently drafting the newest, uh, budget for FY twenty-six and I hope to have that done and submitted by the end of next week uh, with the capital planning, uh, some of the projects that we have already been working on and already secured some funding for. Uh, hoping to continue with a couple of those for the capital planning. But, uh, it was a busy month and, uh, we've really started this year out with, uh, uh, some very high call numbers, even higher than last year. And last year, we had a fifteen percent call volume increase. So, uh, we're already above that in the first month and a half of, of this year. So it's been very, very busy.
Good. Thank you, Chief. Any questions, David?
No. Good job, Chief.
Thank you.
No.
Thank you very much, Chief.
Thank you.
Next, we have a discussion with a possible vote on surplus property fire hoses at the Fire Department. Anticipate a vote.
Good evening again. Um, I'm here this evening. As the board is aware, we were fortunate enough to receive a FEMA grant uh, through the Assistance to Firefighters Grant Program. Uh, this was a capital planning project that, that we had funding for through capital planning, through the support of the Selectment and Finance Committee. Uh, we secured a hundred and ten thousand dollars at one of, at the last recent town meeting to finish that project out. Um, I did state at that time that we had a grant that was hanging out there and we were hoping it, that it would be successful. They're very competitive grants. Not a lot of people got them and we were very suc- uh, fortunate to get one. So that grant covered the vast majority of this project and I'm happy to report, we just, I just requested a payment from FEMA the other day of ninety-eight thousand dollars. So I anticipate that we should be able to return al- almost a hundred, over a hundred thousand dollars worth of that hundred and ten that we appropriated. And so that's gonna cost taxpayers almost nothing to replace all of that stuff. So, um, what I'm here tonight is I submitted a letter to Karen. Uh, what I would like to do and like with the board's permission is to, the older hose that we have, that's twenty-plus years old, a lot of it, as the letter states, uh, mostly, almost all of the supply hose that we have was actually donated to us from the town of Wales and a, a, a couple towns in Connecticut when they also got a grant for this, almost the exact same thing. So we took on their four-inch supply hose and everything, free of charge. They gave it to us. It was better than what we had and newer. That is now gone by another fifteen years since that happened. This hose is older. It, we still testing it. It has passed. However, we lose more and more lengths of it every year. And that's why we brought this capital planning project forward. So for us, it's kind of at the end of its useful life. And what I'd like to do, uh, because we got that grant, what I'd like to do is do what Wales and Connecticut did for us. And I'd like to turn that older hose over to three other departments that could use it. These are three departments in the Berkshires, the town of Colrain, the town of Howley, and the town of Heath. Uh, all of these departments have much older equipment than we are fortunate enough to have. They can get a little bit more longevity out of this, maybe a couple of years. I would like the board's permission to, to allow them to take ownership of that hose, uh, knowing that we were able to replace all of ours.
Very good. I have no objections on that.
You guys?
No.
No?
No, I think it's good. We're passing it forward. We got it free and we're giving it to somebody else because it's no longer suiting its purpose for us.
Yeah, anything that's newer that we, the town has bought recently or anything, we, we will be retaining this. That, you know, that we will keep that stuff as our spares and everything like that. This is simply the stuff that is aged and, and was donated and things like that. So that's what I'm asking for. All of the current stuff, we have about ninety-six percent of the stuff that we needed has come in. It's currently stored in one of the Conex containers, uh, out here. We'll be, uh, over the next, uh, uh, two months, we'll be outfitting all the trucks with the new hose. It's cured, locked up and everything. So we were able to coordinate with, uh, Jim McKeon, Emergency Management, to make sure that we could make that switch over as, as seamlessly as possible. But we're waiting till a little bit better weather comes, 'cause I don't wanna freeze the trucks up for hours on end, being out in the cold and having to switch all the hose over. So as soon as that takes place and the old hose comes off, we will be, uh, make, uh, arrangements for those towns to be able to pick that up.
Very good. So I propose that we make a motion.
All right. I'll make a motion. All right, where we at? Um, make a motion to allow the Fire Department to, um, pass the fire hose, um, forward as recommended by the Fire Chief.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
David Dufran, aye.
Richi Hacker, aye.
Derek Bailey's, aye. Motion approved.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, sir.
Police Chief Monthly Report.
Good evening. Jerry Mallett, Police Chief. This is the report for January. The Police Department logged fourteen hundred and thirty-six calls of service, investigated four felonies, had fifty-five incident reports, two arrests, one warrant, uh, excuse me, two on-view arrests, one warrant arrest, twenty-two summons arrests for a total of, that is not right. I did something wrong in adding this up.
You're up backwards.
Yeah, I did. That should be twenty-four. So, zero protective custody's, uh, two juvenile arrests, a hundred and eleven motor vehicle stops, seventy-four citations. And, and I added this one. I figured this would be a good one to report every month, is the accidents that we go to. Uh, we had eleven motor vehicle accidents. And then, for the month, on the seventh, I attended the Department Head Meeting put on by Town Minister Jim Ferreira. Also there was our Maya representative who spoke of opportunities for classes to, for us to take through Maya, which I actually, later on, you'll see I took one. On the se- also on the seventh, I met with Stu, School Superintendent Steve Duff, Principal Casey Haynefield, and Safety Chair Eric Urban to go over the upcoming lockdown drills that we were gonna have. On the eighth, I attended the Central Mass Chiefs of Police Association Monthly Meeting and Training. Members of the DA's office were there to advise Chief of, uh, a new law that was coming into effect March first that would change how discoveries on cases are submitted. On the thirteenth of the month, we lost Officer Brian, uh, Officer, I shouldn't say lost, Officer Brian Fister left the department due to personal reasons. Uh, I wish to wish Officer Fister the best in his new endeavor as well as good luck with his new baby. On the morning of the fourteenth, I attended a, I attended a class on police accreditation. Then in the afternoon, I met with the panel for the sergeant's promotion to put forth a candidate. And then in the evening of the fourteenth, I attended my monthly Homeland Security Meeting. On the fifteenth, we conducted lockdown drills at all three schools in the Quavoag District. For this drill, we conducted it a little differently at Quavoag, which meant I needed a little bit more bodies than normal. Uh, I would like to thank the, uh, my officers who were attended, uh, Chief Lavoy and his team that were there, uh, Westbrookville Pe- Police, Westbrookville Fire, and State, uh, Police Barrack C Three, who all sent people assisted for this. On the sixteenth, I started a supervision, supervisor's training series put on by our, our insurance company, Maya. Uh, I actually signed up for this that day that Jim brought in the Maya rep. This was a four-part training that will count towards a credit for our insurance premium. Also on the sixteenth, Officer Charlie Williams was put in front of this board for a promotion to Sergeant. Congratulations, Sergeant Williams. On the twenty-second, I met with the school in regards to a fundraiser, uh, we'll become, can be conducting. Actually, Adam was there too. Uh, on February twenty-eighth, they will be doing a fundraiser with what they call Bear Force One. Uh, it was gonna be a polar plunge at the school, uh, it's to raise money for the Special Olympics. Also on the twenty-second, the school safety committee met and we discussed the drills that we conducted that month. Uh, during the week of the twenty-seventh, newly appointed Sergeant Charlie Williams attended Sergeant School through the Municipal Police Institute. And finally, on the twenty-ninth, uh, the breathalyzer's machine, PBTs, were all brought to the alcohol, uh, officer alcohol testing in Maynard for the yearly testing. That's it.
Thank you very much. Any questions?
I got cotton milk, I'm telling you.
The Chief, did the, um, PBTs and the breathalyzer all pass certification?
Yep, they all passed. They're back in working order.
All right.
Very good. Any questions, Rich? No? No, we're good.
Thank you, Chief.
You got it. I'm not done.
Uh, discussion with a possible vote to appoint firefighter, uh, EMT Colby Cocosa as a traffic constable until June thirty, twenty twenty-five. Anticipate a vote.
Good thing you said his last name, 'cause I don't know how to say it.
That was actually rightfully.
How you say it?
Cocosa.
Cocosa, oh, all right. This is the, uh, traffic program we started last year. It's been very, worked out very well for us. It also gives the Fire opportunity to take these details that we can't fill. Um, they've been great about it. So he passed his ninety days on, on the job, so now he requested if he could go onto the traffic. And I put it, I gave it to Jim, who gave it to you guys, to see if you would be, put him on it.
Awesome.
Absolutely.
So firefighter Colby Cocosa, I'm the newest full-time member of the Warren Fire Department. I started at the end of October. Um, I love it so far. I just wanna say thank you for approving it when I was put up. And I just wanna say thank you and for the warm welcomes. Thank you.
Very good.
I'm good with it. Any questions or?
All right. Chief, do you recommend this?
I do.
So now for me.
Why are we only doing till June thirtieth?
Uh, this, when we did the, um, this is position, we, every July first, they have to submit.
Re-up?
To the board to re-up.
Oh, okay.
So on July first, they'll have to come back for reappointment with all the other ones.
Okay, that's fine.
All right. Do we have a motion?
Yep. I'll make a motion to appoint Colby Cocosa as a traffic constable until June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-five.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
David Dufran, aye.
Richi Hacker, aye.
Derek Bailey's, aye. Motion approved.
Congratulations.
Yeah, congratulations.
Discussion and possible vote on a memorandum of understanding between the Town and Central Massachusetts Regional Planning Commission, CMRPC. Anticipate a vote.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. So this is just an MOU between us and CMRPC uh, for, uh, for them to submit for the next, uh, CDBG application. Uh, they will submit, uh, on behalf of the Town for free of charge um, with hopes that we will sign a contract with them, uh, to, uh, administer the CDBG program if we're awarded it.
That's great. We should do that.
You good?
Yep.
You good yet?
I'm good.
We have a motion.
I'll make a motion to accept the memorandum between the Town and CMRPC and allow the Chair to sign on behalf of the board.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
David Dufran, aye.
Richi Hacker, aye.
Derek Bailey's, aye. Motion approved. Next, we review and discuss the proposed policy and application for one-day liquor license in Town. Anticipate a vote. Karen, is that you?
Are you turning it over to me?
Yeah.
Okay.
You, you did the work on that.
Um, so we got a email from a particular person that wanted to do an event at the Ben and Breakfast here in Town. And they wanted to have a liquor license to be able to sell liquor on the spot. So, Mr. Ferraro and I looked and we did not have anything that we could in place here in Town. So I researched it to different towns. I came up with this one off of Brimfield's website and changed a few words. Mr. Ferraro sent it to, um, and changed a few words. Mr. Ferrara sent it to, um, to Legal to have them look it over. Legal did make two comments on it. Um, the first comment, he wanted to make sure that we understood what we could, regulations that we could do and could not do as a, as a licensing board, as a liquor licensing board. So that first, that first page pink box is just them letting you guys know you can do this, but you cannot do da-da-da-da-da. Okay? Um, the other one they did has to do with the police because we are requiring them to have some sort of security on site when they do it. So he wanted to know, instead of saying, um, "Security plan will require one police officer", he wanted it to say "one police detail". And they would have to know that they will have to, um, get with the police chief and find a detail for that.
Okay, so this isn't clear. Do you need a detail for a hundred and fifty people or more?
Yes.
So if it's a hundred and forty-nine, you do not?
You do not need a detail.
Okay, I think that needs to be a little more explicit. So, um, we require one police detail?
I took this off of mass.gov.
Okay.
So I don't know?
I would just have it say, um, I would say like more than a hundred and forty-nine people or something like that.
Okay.
So my?
Just so it's clear that they don't, you know, if they're gonna have fifty or sixty people, they do not need that.
So my suggestion on that, that should be discretionary to the chief of police. Because?
For under one fifty.
For the amount of people. Because it could be determined type of event. And the chief may say, okay, yeah, one person could do that detail, no problem. Or I might require two, two people and a sergeant to do that detail because of the, the spread of it. The larger.
If you look?
So I would do, require at least one then.
Okay.
And then you could put it that discretion.
If you look at the application, the people that are applying for this have to get it signed off.
Right.
From the police of Chile, police chief. The fire inspector, which is the fire chief, the building commissioner, the board of health, and the tax collector. All three, all of those five people besides us have to sign this agreement. What they're looking at is the Airbnb out on? Yes, thank you. Southbridge Road. They want to do an event this summer, like a concert. And these people want to come in and sell liquor at that time. So?
So that might require more than one.
Yeah, I would think so.
So I, I would say, I would give him discretionary power on how many?
Because he may want somebody at the entrance and then a mile into the woods.
Somebody roaming around.
It, it talks about that too, that you have to have, and I don't know why it says just one, because it talks about in this, that you have to have one at the exit. And you have to have one, um, on where the liquor is being served. So I don't know why it says just one in here. It shouldn't.
It does say unless circumstances warrant otherwise, the security plan where we require one officer.
The whole security plan would have to be approved by the chief. So if he, if, 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 for example, the event is, you know, a ma, major, you know, a big concert and there's anticipated, you know, more than a hundred and fifty or, or a hundred people or whatever the case may be, and the chief felt that, you know, the security plan is not, you know, is not adequate, he could say, "Look, in order to make it adequate, you need to hire two details or, you know, a supervisor."
I think as long as he has the flexibility.
Yes.
Yeah, you want to have, have that flexibility because I don't want it just saying, somebody say, "Well, I can't afford to hire two or three cops to do this." And it says, "I'm only required to have one."
Right.
So I'm only gonna hire one. If you guys want to provide two or three, that's on your dime.
Right.
I, I met the minimum.
Right.
Yeah, it, I think it's covered though, unless circumstances warrant otherwise.
Correct.
I think that gives enough.
So the whole plan has to be approved by the chief.
Yeah, I think that's okay.
If it's not approved by the chief, then it, it will trigger, you know, his comments back to the board as to why it, it wasn't approved by the chief. And ultimately, it will be up to the licensing authority as to whether or not they want to approve the license.
So we would get a copy of the plan?
You would get a copy of everything.
The comments that the chief had made.
Okay.
You know?
Yeah.
And you have to, they have to have a drawing and they have to show, with the fire chief and the police chief, they have to show where is the liquor gonna be sold and that has to be roped off. Where they're going to eat, that has to be roped off. It's, it's very specific exactly what has to happen.
Okay.
So, my question is, have, have the chiefs seen this yet?
No.
Oh, yeah, we should, yeah.
Yeah, before we vote anything in, they should have their input put in. And table it. Get their input, make sure that they're comfortable with the wording.
Right now, the town does not have a, a process defined. There's no process in place. So this will help the town be protected.
It will help the town be protected and will also possibly bring in more business.
Just want to make sure it's done safely.
Absolutely. Alright, I will send a copy of this to the chief.
Okay.
There's a spelling error on this, page six of seven.
Wow, you're good.
Um, yeah, standalone.
I'm on page five. I'm going, where are you reading?
So post in a visable place. It's visible. At the top?
I see it.
And then number five, it's, um, standalone doesn't need to be in quotes and it should have a dash.
Like I said, it's hard to get this from Brimfield.
Yeah, well, let them know. Dave?
Very interesting. Okay, so this has been tabled. Information is gonna go to the fire and, um, police for, for the discussion.
Okay.
So next, we have a discussion and review of the fiscal year twenty twenty-six Selectman's Budget Request. Anticipated vote.
Alright, I need to run and print one thing off that Rich asked me, and I did, but I didn't print it on this. So if you want to start talking about it.
Salary numbers.
How I split it up.
Yeah.
Okay.
So I'll, I'll just say real quick, Selectman B has an eight thousand dollar increase. And I asked her, that's gotta cover her vacation, a new person coming in.
Training.
And her time. Yeah, so I just asked her to break out what that, what is in that eight thousand, so we know.
Okay. Highlighted ones, we're still waiting on final numbers for, um, regional dispatch. You know, uh, we, we were just at the meeting last, uh, this week. That's the high number. We're hoping that it comes in lower.
Oof, man. So I have a question. Karen, the fiscal year ends June thirtieth. Karen's working five days into the new fiscal year and then leaves, quits. She gets all of her vacation?
Yes. It, it gets, uh, uh, it gets put in at, in July first.
So?
Thank you.
I don't know. They're just, so? If I was working for the town, I would wait until July two to quit. Not meaning to throw you under the bus, but?
Excuse me?
But I'm just, well, if you get all your vacation for working five days?
Yeah, I earned that vacation this last year.
Yeah, it's?
Oh, it's from twenty, okay.
It's, it's because she, you know, it, it, as the months go on, yes.
So when you first start, you don't get a vacation for a whole year.
So it accrues and it rears?
Yes.
Okay, alright. That's a different understanding then. Okay. I was like, wow, that's a total deal.
But if I quit decent, in June thirtieth, I would not get it. I have to work past July first.
Ah, okay, alright.
So that's why July fourth is my ending.
Yeah. So you're gonna work thirty, right, thirty-two hours?
Because the thirtieth is Monday. And that's in this fiscal year.
So what did you do with these one, two, three ones?
Okay, so I didn't, I'm guessing about what it would be. The first one is a minimum amount on my pay scale. Then I picked one, kind of down a little bit, and then I did mine.
Okay, yeah, just kind of, yeah.
I just ran them and did it. Just to give you an idea.
I see, okay. What did you budget in though? Which one did you budget?
I have, I budgeted mine. Because I wanted you guys to talk about it.
Wait, which is which one?
The bottom one.
Number three. That's what you budgeted for?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Number three plus the upper part. Well, I think it's in there, right? Plus mine.
So it, it would be the sixty-four, three, seventy-seven, plus nineteen, nine, nineteen, plus thirty-four, forty-eight?
No, it's, this is, this includes that in that.
Oh, got it. Okay.
This last number includes all of that.
Yeah, okay, alright.
So you tell me which one you want to put in and I'll put that in.
I mean, we should probably budget for the highest amount if we find somebody who's been with another town for ten years. I mean, how long have you been doing this job? She's been doing this for four, which means if we find somebody who's been doing it for ten, we're gonna have to pay them more.
Well, come on now.
Well, you, what are you gonna, you can't hire somebody if they've had ten years.
I, I, you know, I, I don't, you know, I don't know what, what, what is out there or, you know, when, when we, when we're ready to?
No, no.
I mean, I, I don't know what, what kind of candidates we will get, but?
But what happens if we under-budget? Then we're kind of in trouble.
No, you're not. Because come this, you'll have enough money.
Yeah, yeah.
So on the special, you can?
As long as we have six months of pay.
Oh, yeah.
If you don't have six months of pay on the bottom, on the top one, you're really paying that person and I'm gonna stay. In fact, I will quit and you can rehire me and I will take you out.
Remember she said that?
So I, I think, I think, you know, even if you were to take the lower number, which we're, we're, we, we're, we're at it, you know, this is gonna be a very tight budget like you just said, Rich.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, even if we take the number one, I mean, if, if for some reason, you know, we needed to make an adjustment, an adjustment can be made in the fall.
Okay. So instead of?
Yeah, let's not start something, if somebody has step fifteen or step ten.
So how come you have sixty-four, five, sixty versus sixty-four, three, seventy-seven? Or is this just a plug-in number for them?
That was just a plug-in number.
Okay. So what you want to put in there, or you would like to put in there, is fifty-six, one, oh, nine, twelve?
The, the minimum, or the step one.
Yeah, yeah. So we have to budget fifty-six, one, oh, nine, twelve?
Yes.
To include her stuff and a new future person.
Fifty-six, you don't do the cents. You go up to the next dollar.
I mean fifty-six, ten then, right?
Yep.
Fifty-six, ten. No, fifty, sorry, fifty-six, one hundred. Or fifty, yeah, or fifty-six, one, oh, nine?
Yeah, fifty-six. Fifty-six, one, oh, nine.
Yeah, whatever it comes out to be. So it's just pennies from there. Oh, so then our budget's going down on that one.
Right.
That's convenient. That makes us look good.
Did you add something else I heard?
Um, no, I was just mentioning about the regional dispatch.
Oh, okay, yeah.
You know, that's the high number. We're hoping that it comes in a little bit less.
Yeah, fifty-four percent.
Well, I mean, you know, um, you know, they're, they're, they're hopeful that, that, um, once they get their final number on the indirect costs from Rutland and their final number on health insurance, that the number is, you know, will come down somewhat.
Okay. Do they have Maya for health insurance?
Yes.
Oh, well, maybe not.
They don't have Maya? No?
Harvard Pilgrim.
Oh, Harvard Pilgrim, okay.
I don't know what their rates are.
They're not happy with it.
No? They're, they're all high right now.
Now, I heard from the Board of Appeals today, and I didn't take that out. She is staying with that five hundred. She's fine with that. So that can go off yellow. That is a set number.
What's, um, historical commission? They're unsure?
Yeah, because Jim, did the historical commission, when she met with you, say she wanted to increase her budget?
No, she hasn't met with me yet.
Oh, okay.
Has she used any of her budget?
Um, yes. For this fiscal year, she used some, but I haven't met with her yet.
Okay. Well, did she, I thought she said she was going up a meeting with you, but I must have misunderstood. Because she hasn't told me whether or not she wants to go up or not.
Uh, she hasn't submitted a budget and I haven't met with her yet.
Overall, budget-wise, how are we doing this year so far?
It's, it's early to tell. There's a lot of moving parts.
Oh, okay.
And, and it's, it's, it's gonna be a tight budget. It's gonna be a tight, very tight budget.
Okay. And how is the current existing condition of the town? Like?
You mean fiscal year twenty-five?
Yeah, yeah.
Departments are trending, you know, right in line with?
About what they should be?
Yeah.
Okay, alright.
So you, you've heard the fire, I mean, the water district. So that one's still in motion. The insurance liability and workers' comp is still. We haven't got a number on that one.
Okay.
And the technology, we haven't got a number from Entree.
Why haven't we gotten anything from Entree yet?
I don't think that they're gonna have much of an increase. I, I, I did talk with them, uh, last week. And we're on a month-to-month, and they rarely, uh, change their plans. I think they've done it, they said to me, once in twelve years. I said, "Well, you know, could you let me know if, you know, if the plan is gonna change and if there's gonna be an increase anticipated?" Uh, she said that she will, but she highly doubts that they will increase.
Is it cheaper to go with a fixed annual? Or do we have to do monthly?
No, they only do monthly plans, monthly plans. Um, and the, um, the only thing that would potentially raise that is additional equipment that is not supported under the agreement.
More they have to deal with.
So, um, there's a couple of devices that we've discovered that were older laptops that we are replacing because departments want to use them, that were, that are not really used by the departments. That will now increase the number of monitored devices. So that will increase our bill. So once we get those finally calculated, um, then we'll, we'll, we'll be able to, uh?
So my, my question is, why are we replacing them if they're not being used by the departments?
Because they're, some of them are just not operable. They're just, they're just, they're just?
So the departments intend to use them?
Yes, yes. Yeah. And then there was one, there was a request by, uh, emergency management. They never had a laptop. They wanted a laptop. And so, um, you know, that would be a device that would have to be monitored.
Yeah.
So I did put in the budget thirty-three, six, just as a guesstimate.
Okay. So the forty-eight hundred was, uh, that was Northeast IT, right? So the forty-eight hundred was, uh, that was Northeast IT, right?
Yes.
We went down to thirty-two-ish, and, I mean, a three, four percent increase isn't terrible. You know, it could be less.
And I don't even think it's gonna be an increase, what I think it's gonna be is just...
Adding more.
Adding more devices for monitoring.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
So the only reason it went up is because we increased...
You have more equipment that, that is on the, up being monitored.
Cool. Alright. Also, oh, we can't vote on this anyway?
No.
Complete?
Nope, I'll just move to the next. Hopefully, we'll have more numbers.
Okay, so next is discussion with a possible vote to determine the final disposition of the property located at thirty-eight Elm Street in Warren, with an anticipated vote to either retain the property or to list the property for sale, anticipated vote.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. So as the, uh, you may recall, back in the, um, um, early fall, uh, the board had given a directive to the treasurer to initiate the proceedings for tax-taking for the property at thirty-eight Elm Street. Uh, she has been working with the tax title lawyer, Coppola and Coppola. Uh, they have a judgment, uh, for, uh, a foreclosure judgment, um, and the town now has, uh, uh, the judgment, um, uh, and owns the property, uh, at thirty-eight Elm.
Now, they still live in there?
Yes. So, um, what will happen?
Wow, that's interesting, okay.
So what will have to happen now is that, um, there will be a, um, a determination made to whether or not the board wants to keep the property or to sell the property. Um, and when, now, because the tax title law has changed, we will have to go out, uh, and to procure the services of a realtor and get it professionally listed, instead of going to an auction like we used to. Um, and, um, and then, uh, we would have it professionally listed, uh, with the realtor. The next order, or the next item on the agenda, uh, is for the board to, uh, ask us to, um, to start the eviction process, uh, in housing court. So what we will have to do is, um, because we believe that there's individuals living there, occupying the property, we will have to, um, evict those, those, um, individuals from the property, start that process, um, and run it simultaneously to, um, getting, um, procuring the services of a, uh, of a realtor.
Why, aren't we gonna auction?
You can't do it right now, the law's changed.
Oh, the law's changed?
The law's changed. So before, we used to be able to auction it off, it used to be a relatively...
Oh, the court case.
Quicker process. And now, we have to professionally list it, uh, with a realtor, a broker-realtor. Um, it has to be listed, um, and then any of the proceeds above and beyond, what the cost for the taking were, and the legal costs, we will have to return that equity back to the original owner.
Right. Who is Todd Broder?
I believe so.
Yeah.
So, um, that's kind of where we are.
One second, we could subtract the real estate cost, right?
All of the, all of the, everything, everything. So I've asked the, uh, the treasurer to keep track and itemize every single cost that, that we have incurred throughout this process, so that we can be made whole when the, when the, when the property does sell.
How long does an eviction take?
It's Massachusetts.
Okay.
Couple of years.
Well, it, it, it could be a, you know, a, a long process.
Okay.
So...
Well, I mean, I just don't wanna evict somebody in the middle of winter, you know?
No, the, the, the judges won't, won't do that, you know, they won't do that. Um, so, um, we will, we, we also will have to insure the property. So I've, uh, we are, we're going to have to insure it for liability. I'm getting a quote from Maya to ensure the property.
And we can subtract that expense from the fees.
Okay.
Yeah, we have to, cause it's town property now.
Do they know that it's town property now?
They've gotten all of the mailings for the, um, for the, uh, taking and the foreclosure process.
Did they even show up for it?
They've been silent on that, from my understanding.
Do we send it certified?
The lawyers handle that, yeah.
Do you know if the cars were returned?
Um, I don't know, I, the, the, they, they wouldn't have had the judgment if, if, if it wasn't done correctly.
Oh, okay, alright.
I'm actually surprised it went so quickly.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I think we started this, like, in August, September-ish?
Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, we're talking over ten years' worth of taxes not been paid.
Yeah, they haven't been paid, they haven't paid taxes the entire time they own the property.
So that comes out of the sale price too, right? We get to recoup our taxes, our expenses?
Yes, but I, I, there's a question as to whether or not you, you can recoup what is currently, uh, what is currently owed. You can, you can, you can, you can recoup the ten years, but like, for fiscal year twenty-five, I don't believe that, uh, you, you'd be able to recoup that.
We wouldn't be getting them from our, from our anyways, so... At least we're getting something, so...
Unless they destroy the house.
Well, then that brings down the value of the house, and that means he doesn't get much. And if, if the, if the value of the house is less than what is owned...
Then he gets nothing.
Then he gets nothing, but then we still have a debt that they owe, because we couldn't sell the property for...
Yeah, but that's...
To break even.
That's uncollectible, I guess, right?
Yeah.
I don't know.
Yes.
And honestly, is it a tear-down? It may just be the house.
I, I don't, I don't know, I mean, I, I've only seen the outside of the house, I, I don't know what it's like on the inside.
I can only imagine that.
Well, it's, the front porch is the only thing that's like falling off. I don't think the inside is bad condition. From what I heard from people being in there, it was, she took care of the inside.
Okay.
Fifty-fifty.
But it's a nice lot in a nice little neighborhood.
It is, it's a cute neighborhood.
Yeah, if they tore down the house and put up something, you know, new and...
I'm sure they could fix it.
Yeah.
It'd be good for somebody.
Okay. Oh, so we have to vote on something?
Yes, so there's, there's, um, a, a motion, that we need a motion for, uh, whether to retain the property or, or list the property for sale. And then we need, uh, a motion as to start the eviction process.
So my thoughts are, the property is of no value to the town, because it has no... There's no significant need in that area.
Correct.
It, we can't put a public safety complex on that little plot of land.
Oh, but it could be a police station.
A very small one.
Or a fire station.
No, it couldn't even be that.
Station C.
So my, my, my recommend, my, my recommendation would be to put the property for sale. There's no value to it for us.
We don't want, yeah, we'd rather, it'd be better to have somebody fix it up and...
Yeah, go in there, be a good neighbor, pay their taxes.
Yeah, helps everybody's property values.
Right.
Yep, I agree. So, yeah, I would do the motion to, um, sell.
I'll make a motion to sell the property at thirty-eight Elm Street.
Do we have a second?
Second, all in favor?
David Dufresne, aye.
Richi Harker, aye.
Derek Bellis, aye, motion approved. Warrants and bills?
No, we have the, the number twelve.
Okay.
So can we legally sell the house with the residents still living there? And let it be the concern of the new property owners?
Well, I think that, I think it could, you know, yeah, I think it can be done that way, but I don't know if it would draw as much money as it would if it were, if they were evicted.
But I wouldn't, I wouldn't stop the sale if somebody turned around and said, hey, I'll buy it with them in it and I...
Yeah.
Cause essentially, they're squatting now.
Well, no, they'd still have to go through, because they, they still have residency there, they'd still have to go through the process. They'd probably have to go through court to get them removed, unless they wanted to leave themselves. Maybe they, whoever buys the house might have a better apartment or something for that, and say, hey, we'll put you over here, and we're gonna renovate this house.
Okay, yeah.
I wouldn't do that, but...
Yeah, a private person has more, um, leeway...
Okay.
Than the town does, cause the court's not gonna be forgiving of us, you know?
So I, I would say we'd want to start the process, cause the longer we wait, the longer it takes, right?
Correct.
It's already gonna probably take a long time.
That's fine with me.
Yeah, I'm good, start the eviction process, but don't hold up a sale if somebody wants to buy the house.
Yeah, absolutely.
Well, I mean, a- again, so what we'll have, I mean, we'll have to procure the services of a real estate agent, so that's gonna take some time before we can even get it listed.
Yeah.
Right. So we'll make a motion, or I'll make a motion to initiate the eviction process for thirty-eight Elm Street.
Do we have a second?
Second, all in favor?
David Dufresne, aye.
Richi Harker, aye.
Derek Bellis, aye, motion approved. Warrants and bills?
Do you wanna read these, now that you're...
Yeah.
You're good?
I'm good.
Alright.
I know I read sometimes. So for warrants, I'll make a motion to pay the following warrants. Payroll, number twenty-three, in the amount of a hundred and nineteen thousand, six hundred and six dollars and seventy-one cents. And for account payroll, number...
Payable, sorry?
It's payable?
Yeah, count's payable.
That's not what it says.
I know.
Amount, account payable, number thirty-one, A, in the amount of one hundred and twenty-one thousand, two hundred and sixteen dollars and fifty-six cents.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
David Dufresne, aye.
Richi Harker, aye.
Derek Bellis, aye, motion approved.
Okay, I'll make a motion to pay the following bills. Uh, Garaventa USA Inc. for four thousand, six hundred dollars. Comcast for two hundred and seventy-nine dollars and eighty-nine cents. Stericycle for one hundred and twenty-eight dollars and thirty-seven cents. American Tower for two thousand, two hundred and eighty-eight dollars. Warren Water District for forty-two thousand dollars. Vanpool for five thousand, six hundred and three dollars and one cent. National Grid for one thousand, six hundred and ninety-one dollars and sixty cents. Pine Ridge for six hundred and twenty, six hundred and twenty dollars. And Verizon for five hundred and ten dollars.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
David Dufresne, aye.
Richi Harker, aye.
Derek Bellis, aye, motion approved. I hear we have minutes approved.
Well, yeah, we do, but I don't think they're in there.
That's alright, did you guys read them?
I already reviewed them.
Yeah.
Online.
Can I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the meeting minutes for...
January thirtieth.
January thirtieth, two thousand twenty-five.
Do we have a second?
I abstain, I wasn't here.
I said, well, I made the motion, so you got a second.
Second, all in favor?
David Dufresne, aye.
Derek Bellis, aye. Minutes approved.
I abstain.
Town administrator report?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Uh, so, um, I just wanted to update the board on a couple matters. Um, number one, the computers were ordered, uh, from Entree Technologies, uh, this week. When I had, had discussed the computers, uh, with them after our meeting last week, um, they, uh, were, um, excited that the board had, had made the approval and that we're all gonna do it in this one phase, um, instead of phases. They had indicated to us that they wanted to get the order in now, because they were anticipating, um, that tariffs would be coming on to these devices in the next week or two, and would, would raise the cost. So we were able to get the orders in before tariffs, um, you know, affected the, uh, computers. So, um, we're, we, uh, we, uh, placed the order this week.
Where are they coming from?
Uh, Dell. I don't, I don't know where they, you know, where they, you know, manufactured Dell, but...
Stuff comes from all over the place, you know?
Yeah, I, they said they, they mentioned that last week, right before us placing the order, Lenovo had, um, had a tariff placed on them, and it affected their orders, so... The Dells, we, they were anticipating Dells, you know, to, to, to have a tariff coming, but we got it in before the tariff, so...
Dells are made in Utah. Where?
Utah.
Utah.
So, uh, this week, we also, uh, myself, Chief LaRoi, and, and Chief Mallett, uh, went to Rutland Regional Dispatch, uh, meeting, uh, to talk about a district model approach, and to talk about their upcoming, uh, FY twenty-six budget. In your, uh, in your binders is a, um, a study, um, that actually was done by the Collin Center. Um, and the, uh, the study, uh, talks about its governance model and the structure of it, um, and how, uh, the, the REC, or the Rutland Regional Dispatch is, is looking to try to go to a, a district model approach. And there's several reasons why they wanna go to this district model approach, and one of them being is that they feel as though that the, the state would recognize them more in terms of, uh, grant funding, E nine-one-one funding, um, uh, you know, that purposes of getting additional funds for the REC. Uh, and, and, and also, they feel as though that a district model approach would, uh, enable other communities, um, to maybe join. Um, and with the goal of trying to lower, um, the annual assessment for every community. I mean, right now, the proposed, um, increase, um, is, is approximately eleven percent higher than what we were assessed last year. So the increases are in the, um, in the, um, uh, assessment costs are continuing to climb. And we have now had, for the last five years, we've had that grant that would, um, offset some of those costs. By all means, that grant was huge for the town, and also mo- moving to this REC was huge for the town because of, you know, the rise of, of costs for health insurance, infrastructure, different things to that nature. Uh, I did want to bring the, the chiefs along, um, and, um, they asked some great questions with regards to, um, you know, our technology that we have right here with our radios, and how would they potentially interface with, you know, a, a, a district model approach? And so they wanted to make sure that our equipment would, you know, you know, be okay with what they're proposing in the future. Um, and that is something that we're gonna continue to have that discussion on, um, so...
Yeah, that's a, that's significant, because you spent a lot of money on our infrastructure.
Sure.
And if it doesn't marry up, then we have to get something different now.
Right, right.
That could be a deal-breaker.
So that's all, that's all in the, that's all in, as part of the discussion. And so this, this packet that, uh, is, is before you, is just some of the things that they looked at. They also are running out of room. Um, they're running out of room in their REC, um, and they need a, a more, uh, bigger footprint, um, especially for, for them to take on additional towns. They can't grow in their current model.
So right now, they have five towns?
Yes.
And the new model will look at...
Well, there, there's, 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 you know, they're looking at trying to attract up to, you know, they have a hit list of about eight, eight towns that they were looking to, you know, try to grab. They feel as though they can't get and be competitive to try to grab, uh, some of them, uh, because they, they're not in a district model.
Do they depend on getting these towns to become a regional? Or the region opens the door to get more towns?
The district does. The district opens more.
So it's almost like they become a county dispatch.
Right.
Yeah, so right now, essentially, we're buying a service from them.
Correct.
Right, they set this regional, or they set the dispatch up, and we buy the service.
We pay for the service, yeah.
So what it's, they're looking to do is, if it's a district, then we're all into it for a percentage, right? And we share, like, all the real costs, as opposed to getting charged a fee, sort of, right?
Yeah, and I, I, I asked that question at the, at the meeting as to whether or not, you know, it would be proportional to the towns. You know, some of these agreements are, you know, the larger towns will have a larger say, and the smaller towns have a smaller say. I specifically... I specifically asked that. They don't, they, they're not, they're not, uh, currently, they're not proposing that. They're, they're, they're making it look as a, a district where everybody would have a one-to-one vote. And, and would have equal representation on the board. The governance model for this that they're, they're looking to do is have the, um, administration part of it. The budgeting part of it, the administration part of it, be run by the town administrators, managers of e- every community. As a board that would meet, you know, quarterly or twice a month or whatever. And then have the day-to-day operations, the operational side, have a board made up of the police and fire chiefs. For operational purposes, and they would, they would go about, you know, operational tasks, if you will.
So assessing values. Are they gonna assess us the same value if they're gonna do another town with twenty-five thousand people? And probably three times the call volume, are they paying the same amount as us then?
That's, that's still, that has to be all kind of worked out and, 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 you know, it, it would, you know, and, and I would imagine that it would be. Trying to assess everybody, um, you know, as a one-on-one vote. That they, that they said that they wanted to do in terms of governance, one-to-one vote. I don't know how their assessment model would break up or shake up right now. You know, it's still, uh, in its early stages, but they wanted the, uh, select boards to review this packet. Um, to look at it over, um, continue the discussion, knowing at some point, they're going to probably. Propose to the, uh, select boards, um, you know, trying to go into this. District model approach with some type of an, an agreement that would be signed by each community.
Has this been done elsewhere? This district?
Yes, yeah, so there's, uh, Westcom, uh, is a, is a district, um, that's out in Western Mass.
This is the new model that public safety is going to do. Down south, they do it. Massachusetts, we were unique where we had PSAPs everywhere, PSAPs, meaning the nine-one-one machines, how we have one, each town has. So it costs the state money.
Okay.
So they wanna consolidate, so that's why when we got rid of our dispatch. The state took away the grant money we were getting to train the dispatchers and it came to a point where we couldn't sustain keeping them anymore.
Oh, okay.
And then they were giving it to regionals. Now what they're doing is they're starting to phase out regionals and they wanna go to this district model so more people can go in and they're gonna fund, put the money into that.
Alright, so it's writings on the wall.
That's what it sounded like in the meeting, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, well.
So, um, you know, these are some drafts, there's a draft, uh, agreement that's also in here that you can look at and. You know, kinda get an idea of, of what potentially could be proposed, uh, in the future. So I just wanted to keep the board up to date on, on that, that discussion. There's another meeting coming up. Um. In Berry on the twenty-sixth at nine AM with the town administrators. I plan on going to that. Um, you know, to, to kinda, you know, take a look and talk enough about the next steps and. And, you know, seeing what, you know, some of the concerns that David had, you know, those, those being addressed.
Okay.
My, my other concern is, is. I, I hate putting all our eggs into one basket. I would like to have a redundant system, so just like with the public safety complex, have a backup to that. So if something happens, that the town can. Take over their own calls and dispatch from there. I, I know they do their best when they can, but. Say, y- you go to a county model and then all of a sudden, something happens to that county model. Everybody's going through that. Now, everybody's without communication. Is there a redundant system to this? To be able to make sure we can still get services because we can't just stop, you know? We still need to be able to communicate.
W- would the state police, uh, be able, if, 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 or if the REC went down, would, would?
They're on a different radio system.
If the REC went down, nine-one-ones calls are automatically, uh, they go to another PSAP, they have backups.
Oh, they have backup.
Calls will go, it would, you'd be talking about just regular, normal people calls or station rec if that went down. Now, when we had storm, big storms, we. Credit Adam with this, um, we brought in people that, that gone to Station A and then we've done dispatching, uh, yeah, to keep the load off of Rutland. Um, so we have, we've had plans in the past for stuff like that, but if you're talking like if the nine-one-one or something like that went down. There's backups to where if Rutland's jammed up with nine-one-ones and you still call nine-one-one, it'll go, it goes to a backup facility. So I don't know who their backup is, do you know?
Uh, I know.
Cuz we just recently had the nine-one-one system go down.
They, they were, they were talking between Pittsburgh, but I believe that they recently, I believe it's the Webster Dudley. Complex, uh, that they're, they're doing through the district, that there's a backup, like Rutland is a backup for District Eight Fire. If their system goes down, so there is some redundancy built in there for protection, like locally, I mean, if they have a, a, a small outage, we do handle it in-house normally. Or if they're overwhelmed on an ice storm and there's trees coming down all over multiple towns, we dispatch in-house for that, you know, and that's kinda set up that way. But I had some of the, you know, I said the exact same thing to Jim and Jerry on the way home, you know, some of your concerns, you know, the, the money we just put in the radio system. You know, I mean, you know, there's multiple different types of frequencies, you know, there's VHF, there's UHF, there's eight-hundred, state police. State entities in general operate generally on eight-hundred, you know, all the other towns in Rutland are UHF, we're VHF. So we're kinda the, the one that's on their, on their own frequency. It works great for us cuz we're the only ones talking on our frequency, but the other towns operate on one channel. So it really depend on the other communities that if they were to take them in, what they were on. And, and I, and I did express that exact same concern is that, you know, I don't wanna see the town paying a second time for equipment. So I'm sure that stuff will all be hashed out, but basically, it's a, it's a way to attract other, other communities in. Lessen the, lessen the, the assessments in general and open up the oversight to it, to multiple communities as opposed to. Right now, you know, and again, there's a lot unanswered questions and I'm not saying I'm pro or for, I'm just try taking the information as everybody else's. But right now, Rutland, for the lack of better terms, runs the show. Rutland sets the wages, Rutland sets the budget, Rutland does all of that. This change from a, a, uh, regional to a, 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 uh, district would allow the towns to have more oversight. They would allow the towns to have a, 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 a larger say in the process and stuff. Could there be some added costs? There could be, we don't know. That's what we're trying to, that's what this study is trying to figure out and narrow down. So I do, I certainly don't wanna see a town paying more than they have to. So I'm kinda, I think both, all of us are kinda just taking this in as it's come our way and listening to where, how this is gonna roll out.
He did say that, oops, sorry, there was multiple, you had asked how the payments were. I guess each district would have to set that cuz they, they were saying how some would do, if there was eleven towns in there, they split it up eleven ways. Or they do it by population.
Several different ways they can do it.
Call volume.
Population, call volume based, it could be just however many communities are there, they split it evenly, there's. Different ways that different PSAPs or different regional, uh, districts do it. So that would have to be something that if this was approved, it would be decided at the administration level of the town managers brought back to the select boards. And then, as, as, you know, Jim said, the operational portion of it would consist of the administration of each fire department and police department.
Uh, is there a technology that converts VHF to UHF and BATW?
Um, yes, in the sense that, um, yes, so we, we can, we can, what's called crossband certain frequencies. You know, I'm on the District Seven comm team and, and that's what we do is during large events when there's a lot of other mutual aid coming in. From Connecticut and from other places that may have eight-hundred and we are able to basically, for lack of a better terms, we're able to marry different frequencies together. So, you know, it doesn't matter whether they're UHF or VHF, we can patch, do a radio patch, and now all of a sudden, those two frequencies can talk together. And be very careful about it cuz you can also really screw that up and make it worse. You know, you can't, you can't patch two VHF channels together, you could, you know, but you can do VHF to UHF. So there's a lot of different things that you gotta be a little bit crafty to be able to do and a lot of it's above my head too, but I learned a lot being on this team and. You know, but yes, there's, there are certainly ways that you can make this all work, but you know, again, the equipment, you know, it, nothing is now owned by. The individual towns, it's owned by the district, you know, so it's just a, it's just a total different model.
Oh, so our equipment would, we would turn our equipment over to the district?
No, not necessarily the equipment, but like say that, you know, i- if Rutland had a tower that they erected, okay, we don't own the towers that we have. We rent off those towers, but like say Rutland built a tower and it was for their system and that was voted to become a district, it's now a district asset. Not a town of Rutland asset.
Okay.
Cuz it's owned by the town of Rutland specifically for that, so it's just changes the dynamic of, of, you know, who has oversight and, and that kinda stuff. So it could be beneficial, it could be great, you know, it, you know, it could come with some added costs, we just don't know yet.
A lot of moving parts in there and he- here's a, here's a map too. Um, you know, all of the white areas are, are currently, you know, uh, either doing their own dispatch or. Or, or not affiliated with a, a REC center. Um, but, you know, in, in what they're trying to do is to try to get everybody into these districts, so this would be one district. This would be two district, three, and so on and so forth to try to consolidate, um, you know, the services. So that was a, a very interesting, uh, meeting and, and, uh, you know, I'm sure there'll be more information to come on that. Um. The budget process, uh, the budget process has started, uh, today, uh, myself and the town accountant had met with the Warren, uh, uh, library. Um, and went over their budget, um, we are continuing on with the process, uh, next week. Uh, there's some other departments that are coming in next week, um, now that everything's been finalized with the, uh, the wage scale. Departments are, are filing, uh, filing their budgets and, and bringing them in, so that process is moving right along. The FinCom is meeting, uh, on Tuesday at three, uh, to, uh, to start their, their budget hearings as well. They'll be running simultaneously, uh, again, with, with my budget hearings, um, with the departments before the FinCom. So, uh, prepping them for FinCom. Um, I had a conversation, uh, this week with, uh, AES, um, uh, Solar. Uh, for the Cronin Road Site, uh, for the, um, for the pilot. Um, so, uh, we had a, a Zoom call and, you know, we talked about, you know, the competing. Uh, pilot agreements, one being signed, the other one's not signed, um, you know, they haven't paid their pilot agreement on any of the one. Because they were looking for, for guidance from the town, I said, well, at minimum, you have to pay your pilot agreement on the one that's signed. So I would suggest getting that payment in now, uh, which they said that they were gonna be cutting that check now, uh, for that one. Um, and they are going to be bringing, uh, to their, uh, team, um, you know. Trying to, to get some information, uh, from their team as to whether or not they would be agreeable to the, to the higher dollar one. Um, that, uh, is not signed, um, and, um, and they are going to be researching that. And getting it back to me as to whether or not they'd be agreeable to just signing that. Um, and hopefully I will be, will have some opportunity to discuss this later on when I have some more information from them. But they are at minimum paying their payment that they owe us, uh, for the signed agreement. And then they're gonna be seeing whether or not they can sign the other agreement, uh, for, uh, for the higher amount right now.
Do we know the amount?
Um, it's, the, the difference is about sixteen thousand dollars.
But what, the minimum that the one signed it, how much they're paying?
Uh. I think it was about sixty thousand dollars, about sixty thousand. Uh, police contract negotiations, our first meeting with the Patrolman's Union is going to be on February, uh, twenty-fifth. Uh, myself, the chief, uh, we're gonna start those, uh, then. Um, Ware Business Association is meeting, uh, next, uh, week on, uh, Wednesday at eight-thirty. Uh, at Hannah's on Main and Ware President of Bay State Medical Center is gonna be there. I'm gonna be at the meeting, I've invited Adam, I know Chief, uh, Jerry, you're, you're out of town, right?
What day is it?
Wednesday?
Yes.
Yep, so, um, uh, for, for Bay State Medical, I think this would be a great opportunity.
The twenty-sixth, this is?
Yes, yep. Uh, to talk about the needed healthcare, uh, services, uh, for the area. Um, and, uh, the public safety complex. So we have, uh, you know, the study has been, uh, finalized. I need the board to start thinking about, um, some direction as to, you know. How they wanna proceed, whether they want to do a, um, you know, start a, a series of informational. Uh, you know, educational component, you know, I would, I would encourage them to consider that. You know, closer to a possible, you know, meeting or, or vote on it. Um, you know, uh, but, you know, the, the, we do need some direction as to whether or not, you, you know, how the board wants to proceed. You know, potentially at this annual, although it's very close, it's, it's kinda cutting it tight. Uh, probably, you know, you know, are we looking at, you know, maybe the fall, are we looking at next year, you know, what are we looking at? Um, but to start thinking about that. I don't need the answer tonight, but to start thinking about what direction you wanna move in for, for this. To bring this to the, to the residents. Just keep in mind that the longer it's pushed out, the, 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 the numbers of the study will change. You know, there'll be changes to that.
And, and Tecton is on the hook to help us with the presentation.
Yes, Tecton is on the hook to make, uh, two to three presentations.
Two to three, oh, okay.
To the public.
Three. Three to four.
So, um, I, I, I also wanna, um. Uh, we, we have a, um, we got a word, uh, that our moderator has appointed, uh. A new member to the capital planning committee and we're really excited about that and, uh, we're really, uh.
He's a bit of a troublemaker, isn't he?
That's what we hear from his wife.
Yeah. She talks about her all the time.
So we're really excited for him to, uh, to join and I'm really looking forward to working with him in, uh, that capacity. So Jim, congratulations.
Congratulations, sir.
And we need to s- start meeting pretty soon, right?
Yeah, so.
Now you got a full committee.
You know, in, in like, you know, the beginning of March or so.
Okay.
You know, I think we could maybe have a meeting.
Okay.
And then the final matter I just wanted to bring to your attention is that I did receive a letter from a resident.
Um. It's in your packet.
It's in the packet, okay, yeah. Uh, the, the letter from the resident, uh, was just that, about the public safety complex. Um, she was, she was wanting to know, you know, kinda what the timeline was and, you know, if there would be a, a special versus an annual. Um, and I think she had, uh, this person had made some requests, uh, for it to be on a Saturday, um, but it, the letter is in your packet.
Yeah, Donald Nielsen.
Donald Nielsen.
Yeah. I think it's.
Not a she.
Yeah.
Sorry about that.
I think it's a fair point, having just a separate meeting, right? I mean, the town meetings are long enough as it is. So have a separate meeting maybe like in the fall?
Well, if you do a separate meeting, you can have. You can have a whole presentation done prior to anybody doing a vote, so they could hear everything. Look at all the options, it can be discussed and then it can be voted on.
Yeah.
I think you need several meetings.
Well, yeah, you're gonna need several meetings, but for the actual vote.
But for the actual day.
Yeah.
It should be its own thing.
Yeah, I, I. I think it's a great idea.
It's gonna take a while. People are gonna be very concerned, they're gonna be, you know, have a lot of questions.
And the suggestion here is to do it on a weekend so more people can attend. Which I'm, I'm fine with. I know we had an issue with Saturdays in the past, but.
Cable can also record it and just put it online after the first one.
Yeah.
Well, it's the first presentation.
The voting one is the one we really need people.
Yeah. I, I'm, I'm sure about that, but let's say we do the first one, we ask cable to record it, now it'll be online for everybody to watch.
Yeah, yeah. I'm sure Travis will be there, right?
Awesome.
He got plenty of time.
Any new business?
Business.
Nothing.
No.
Any old business?
George has said they're all set.
Okay.
They're good?
They're good. If we can't do it, we can't do it, no big deal. They were just asking.
Alright. Cozy Oak?
Oak Furniture.
I spoke to Carl, um, and he would be willing to do a, uh, a Zoom. Um, uh, he is from Indiana, uh, and so he would potentially be willing to come to a Zoom. Uh, of the board's choosing, uh, he did mention that if you guys, uh, could formulate your questions ahead of time so we can be prepared for the Zoom. Um, he, he would, he would think that that would be making it more of a productive meeting, but he'd be willing to make a presentation. And discuss his proposal, um, with the board.
I don't think I really have any questions.
I don't think I really have any questions until you hear the proposal.
Well, I think we had several. We had, is he gonna use the whole thing?
Oh, yeah. Schedule?
What, what is he thinking of the schedule?
Yeah.
There was, yeah, we had just general questions.
Right.
So, I would say set a date and then we can look back through it and come up with our questions. Maybe we get him questions like a week before or so, right?
Yep. Do, do you have a date in mind? Do you think in like end of March or?
Yeah, I guess, right.
Whenever you can get him.
Okay.
Whenever's best for him, Thursday meeting.
All right.
The twenty-seventh is a liquor license period.
Twenty-seventh of February?
For all of them?
Well, yeah, we're not gonna do February. I would, we're do the end of March and then we have time to read over and do questions.
Mm-hmm, okay.
I'm just studying, you know?
Okay. Like the twentieth or the twenty-seventh, I guess?
Okay. I'll touch base with him.
So, has he bought the property?
I don't believe he has, no.
Okay.
Any correspondence?
That's the one that already.
Yeah, we already did it.
You're so good. Any comments or concerns?
No.
No? Anybody in the public? Yes, Joe?
Joe Condrat, resident. Uh, when it comes to thirty-eight Elm Street, I'd like to suggest that you should notify the Board of Health of intent to evict a tenant presently living there. As I recall, when I was on the board, that was like a year and a half ago, we began certain investigations, there may still be paperwork related to thirty-eight Elm. And it might help in the eviction.
That's good to know.
Yeah, just let Board Health know that it's going through the process.
Uh, the other thing is with the amount of melting that might have happened today, be careful tonight, there's gonna be black li- ice everywhere. And I don't think that the Police and Fire Department needs to go out because somebody decides it's a July day and they can do ninety miles an hour.
Thank you.
Thank you, Joe.
Not that we recommend anybody doing ninety miles an hour.
Yeah, right. It's why I have those flashing signs that post the speed limit, right?
Yeah. You know something I see now that's becoming popular? Is the solar-powered flashing signs for stop signs. They have the LED light, they're all red.
Yeah.
So, for problem intersections, they, it just flashes. So, and it gets your attention, but I still see people blow through them though. Just some people just don't wanna stop the stop signs.
Yeah.
So. With reference to that, I believe the state's police have come out with a new thing. It's not only a tracker of your speed, but it also has a camera. And they will mail you a ticket.
Anybody else?
Ray Capaco, resident. I appreciate the board acting appropriately in regards to the George's pizza dumpster issue. I'll, it saves me a lot of comments, so I'll just move on. And I'd ask the board's chair to please consider a policy and a practice to allow presenters to give their reports without unnecessary interruption. Of course, there may be plenty of presentations that need interruption because that's the manner in which the styles being, the, the, the matter being presented requires a, a dialogue and interaction. But it's not appropriate for presenters to be interrupted when they're just giving a report, a factual report. It's disrespectful to the presenter, it's disrespectful to the rest of the people who are either listening to or in the meeting. And it is, it's a very simple solution. If you've got a comment or a question that needs to be made or should be made, which I certainly encourage lots of questions, lots of comments to be made about a presentation, but they can wait till the end of the presentation. It's just a good, a better way to run the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Yeah, we're working on that. Anybody else? Anybody on Zoom?
No.
Our next meeting is February twentieth at six PM. It's a week from tonight. I hope everybody has a very good Valentine's Day tomorrow. And could I have a motion, please, to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
David Dufresne, aye.
Richi Hacker, aye.
Betty, Betty's aye, we're adjourned. Thank you.
Forgot my role.